Good morning. It's now nine AM. The time scheduled for the today's Spokane County Planning Commission meeting. Today, we have a very busy agenda. We have four items for public hearing. And one of those items, the windmill item, will be continued to a meeting next month. Scott, you want to address that?
Certainly. Yes, we're holding a public hearing on four zoning text amendments, the first three of which we are asking your recommendation on today. The fourth is on wind turbines, and that is here to take public testimony, and that we are asking you to continue indefinitely. So there'll be no action on that today. We will hold that over, and we'll talk about when it comes up. But we will also be holding open the public comment period after this meeting. So when the hearing is continued, people can submit comments, concerns, questions to us via our web or email continuously, and then we will bring that back for another session before you. And at that future session, we will then ask for your recommendation to go to the board.
Thank you. We also have six workshop items that we'll be discussing after we deal with the agenda for the things we're voting on that deal with comp plan amendment requests for 2024. Is that correct, Scott?
Correct, and those will be coming back for a public hearing on September 12th.
Before we go any further, we'll ask the members of the planning commission introduce themselves, beginning with my right, Logan.
Good morning, Logan Camporielli.
Good morning, Melissa Whitstruck.
Bonnie Edwards.
Clyde Hossi.
Pete Rayner, Chairman, or Vice Chairman, and our chairman is out of town today. We will begin with public comment period about anything that's not on the agenda. Before I do that, I want to let you know that the public may participate in person or remotely by utilizing our web link and telephone conference links. Individuals are limited to one three-minute comment period for any item. Please keep your comments specific to the current agenda item. Chat is not supported. I can't hear you. Their yellow sheets, if they'll bring them up there, that would be great. We appreciate it. Scott, if you want to, do we have any public comments that are not on the agenda first? I don't see any. We're going to begin with the hearing on ZTA 0012023 regarding the gun club. Scott, if you'd enlighten us on this matter, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have brought this to you a couple of times before. We're here now today for an official public hearing to take testimony and ask for your recommendation. We have excuse me while we get this going. Our technology seems to be letting us down today. Can we just go to the next slide? You can see the background on this. Unlike comp plan amendments, zoning text amendments can be done at any time by recommendation of the planning commission. This public hearing is to consider four of them. One related to the gun and archery range definition. One related to small-scale meat processing facilities. One related to changing temporary use allowances, notably for those areas that are reacting to those areas in the Elk, Oregon road fires. And then a zoning text amendment that will create new zoning code for wind energy. Next slide, please. These are the six criteria by which an amendment can be offered. And all of these have meet at least one of these. You must meet one. You don't have to meet all six. Next slide, please. So ZTA 0123 is changing the definition of a gun and archery range. Next, please. The, this would be through a, both a zone change and adding a conditional use permit rather than a by right operation. That conditional use permit, we'll talk about some of those conditions here in just a minute. But it's a, it's a added layer of public review. Instead of something that can be done by right or by simply applying for a building permit, conditional use requires a hearing in front of the hearing examiner. It involves public notice. It involves a more robust public participation so that people know what to expect in an area. Next, please. These are the four sort of groups that we've identified in addition to the Spokane Gun Club that operate in Spokane County. Next, please. So what we're doing is reacting to the Spokane Gun Club, which is asking for this amendment because their, their nature has changed. Next, please. They had previously had a site over, before the city of the valley was incorporated. And that was ultimately sold to the school district, and they've been looking for a home ever since. Next, please. The site they had purchased originally was out by Fairchild, adjacent to the cemetery. And that ultimately was a court decision that prohibited the gun club from using that site. And that prohibition was related to, notably to the fact that the uses that the gun club wanted to do were prohibited by the zoning code. So that's, that's, next slide, please. And this is what was previously in the code with a CUP. And as you see, it provides very limited review criteria at the time. Next, please. So what we're doing is adding to that definition to allow a hearing examiner to better compare what this gun club or any other that would come in could do in a future part of the county. Next, please. So this is the change to the definition. You can see the, the ordinary text on top is essentially what exists now. And what is being proposed is to add this to the definition. And it talks about multi-day competitions that will be supported by allowing camping, allowing some limited retail, food services, and other items for those participants at the time. Next, please. These would be the first of the criteria in specific zoning language. We're changing the site sizes and recognizing that an archery range and a shooting range really require different sized parcels for safety purposes. But now talking about those accessory uses, the limited food in retail, multi-day events, and then having some safety issues for access for public safeties, for example, fire or emergency services, and then health district and fire regulations. And then, of course, the hearing examiner may also produce other conditions as testimony and as she sees fit. Next, please. Yep, we just went past. So if we could go back one night. So, Mr. Chairman, I think at this point it would be prudent to take questions from the planning commission to open the public hearing on this amendment specifically. And then at the end of that, we can move on to the next one. So I'm open to questions, and you are able to take any questions or comments from this public.
Any members of the planning commission want to address the staff?
Yeah, I'll just ask one question. We had a lot of feedback about strategies to mitigate impacts of a gun club or archery range. And there aren't any, a lot of them prescribed there, but I see the last, could we actually bring that slide back up, please? I'm sorry. So I can be more clear. Thank you. So Section G now, basically, we're just putting this on the hearing examiner. The hearing examiner, it'll be their job to prescribe conditions that might include things like public safety mitigation, environmental compatibility mitigation, management practice mitigation, and other sorts of mitigation measures to suppress noise. Basically, just put that on the hearing examiner. You don't think they need more guidance than that from staff?
And yes, it seemed, and let me clarify that. Every one of these applications that goes before the hearing examiner has a staff report from planning staff. In that staff report, on a case-by-case basis, we will address each of those so that we will give the hearing examiner that exact guidance for every one of those criteria.
So the hearing examiner will have some tools to make this decision and to sort of either use your staff's recommendation or build upon staff's recommendation to come up with something that seems suitable?
Yes, it'll be a combination of what's explicitly in the code. And then the staff report will also have best practices, best available science for that particular use at that particular time to give that to the hearing examiner for her consideration. Thank you.
Scott, I have a question to follow up on that. For better clarification, could we go back to the location, to the screen that has the shooting range? It had pointed out the locations there. I, I was inquiring. There you go. The one, there's a one on Elder Road, a shooting, and I, and then there's also an archery range out on Linky and Chapman Road. Are these included in this list, or should they be, or what?
We, we did some investigation based on those that we could legally identify. There may be some informal places for this that we're not aware of that are operating either by themselves or by right in the other aspects. But the zoning text amendment would apply universally. Any gun club, any archery range that wanted to participate would be able to use that definition. However, they would need to go through the conditional use permit process.
And how are we going to identify where these are existing? Or I'm just asking, how are we going to get the word to these people that we don't have on the list?
Anybody that is currently operating legally would be considered a prior non-conforming use once this is adopted, if this is adopted. They would be able to continue under the old definition, which is very vague. If they were, if they were operating without, or in an area that was not zoned or was not part of this, and we were notified by that, our code compliance staff would send them a letter saying, you're out of compliance. Here's what you need to do to come into compliance. Here's how you apply for a conditional use permit.
Will there be a clause in there of being grandfathered in that they don't have to comply?
If they are operating legally today, they would, they would be able to continue. As you say, grandfathered, in, in the legal side, it's called a prior non-conforming use. They were a use that existed prior to the adoption of more constrictive zoning. In effect, they are allowed to continue. That said, in any case, you're not allowed to make a non-conforming use more non-conforming. So none of them could expand. They could not change their operations without coming back into compliance. Thank you.
Mr. Chesney, thank you for this. I appreciate it. I know your staff has done a lot of work on this. But I, like my colleague here, am concerned that best environmental practices and et cetera, the other conditions that are on there are not defined, nor do they, at least as far as I can see right now, are not pointing, pointing to, here's what that means, and best environmental practices, and limits on noise and such. So I'm concerned that, yes, the hearing examiner does have leeway and has a staff report in front of them to make that decision. But there's not anything referenced that says, here's what it is.
I understand. And when I say it's on a case-by-case basis, what that means is an archery range is going to generate much different impacts on its site and for its neighbors than a skeet and trap range. A skeet and trap range is going to be different than a rifle range. And so each of these uses will have individual components that will be adjudicated, so to speak, at the time of that conditional use permit. In this case, we're, we're writing the zoning text to be broad, but indicate that those elements must be considered on that case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate that. But what about people that use exploding archery equipment? And it's, I mean, I mean, because they do. And what about fire season? I mean, how is this?
Sure.
Get, how does this get pointed to so that we can efficiently and effectively make a decision?
The challenge with writing code regulating activities is if you try to anticipate every possible use, your zoning code will start to approach, you know, 10 pounds of paper. So what we do is, is try to anticipate a range of uses, but also put into that, that for each use, all of their individual considerations would be taken into account. So if someone, if an individual landowner comes in and says, yeah, I've got this idea for a medieval catapult and exploding rock range, then those parameters would be considered in that conditional use permit. And so that's why we have those broad things, environmental best practices and other things. There's, there's no way to anticipate in any category every possible use. So the, the language is necessarily vague, but also saying those, those trigger words of you must consider these individual elements by the application.
I'm going to ask a real foolish question. How enforceable are they going to be? I mean, interpret it and enforce it. I mean, otherwise, we're kind of wasting a lot of paper, I think.
Of course. Spokane County, like many places, our code compliance effort is complaint-based. We do not send troops out looking for violations. If there's a complaint about an organization, we will investigate it. It may be, it may be a zoning complaint, which our staff would handle. If it's a, a club or something decides to put up a structure without building permits, our building inspectors would handle it. If it's noise or rowdy behavior, we use the sheriff's department to handle that. If it is safety from water, sewage, other drainings, the health department handles that. So we have in place a series of organizations for code compliance to do that, but it is complaint-based. We don't, we don't go out looking for things. And, and I guess the, the teeth in that is, under a conditional use permit, if there are violations of that permit, the permit can be revoked. Mr. Chairman? Welcome to open the public hearing.
Yeah, there was one comment from City of Airway Heights. Does staff have any response to that comment? And yeah, just curious about, we don't often get agency comments that are sort of, that have a specific recommendation like that, and so was just curious.
Logan, I honestly don't have that before me. I think that was distributed to your folders, and I didn't see it.
Gotcha. Should I, do you want me to read it to you?
If you could summarize it, sure.
Yeah, it came from the Airway Heights Planning Department, the planning director there, Heather Troutman. And it basically is in reference to this code amendment and says that the city of Airway Heights would request an additional standard be included in the code. And it would say, the site shall be no closer than half mile for archery range and one mile for any gun range from any city or urban growth area boundary.
That does not seem to be an unreasonable request. If the planning commission agrees with that, you could offer that as an amendment today, and we would carry that forward to the board.
The staff doesn't see any concern with that kind of language?
We have no objection.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from staff at this point in time? If that being said, I want to make one announcement, just to clarify the record. I have a potential conflict of interest with this matter, so I will not be commenting on it, nor will I be voting on it. But with the chairman gone, I'll, you're stuck with me to manage the meeting. So I just want to let you know that. Scott?
And, and one clarification, because we, we know a lot of people that are at the last several workshops have been concerned about the current property that the gun club owns. There is no legal circumstance in which that property can be used if, for that purpose, even if this amendment is passed. The court order itself prohibits that. If the court order was somehow, and, and nobody's appealed, I mean, it's, it's gone through its process. There's a second prohibition that was not even considered at the time, and that is the Air Force Joint Land Use Study contours that would also prohibit the use on that property. And so to be clear, the property the gun club currently owns cannot be used for gun club purposes, even with the passage of this amendment. They will have to find a different site that qualifies.
Thank you. With that said, I'd like to call the sponsor to come up and make whatever presentations they want to make to the planning commission.
Thank you. My name is Dwight Hume, and I'm here on behalf of the Spokane Gun Club. I just wanted, I proposed the language and had it edited, et cetera, by staff review and have attended all of your meetings. Of course, you've been here. And the conclusion and review of the current draft before you is acceptable to me. I find no reason to further modify it. There is a, not within the body of the, of the amendment, but within the staff report, there was mention of various elements of consideration which were a little confusing because they said things like the roads on-site, traffic circulation needed to have some form of, basically, dust abatement. And then the next item it says is onsite, circulation should be paved. That's not in the body of what you're acting on today, and nor do we want paving on-site to be required because it's cost prohibitive in terms of the viability of, of an operation like this. So I agree with what before you in the staff, the language of the staff proposal, and recommend that that be approved as such. Mr. Chesney has answered some very pertinent questions about the, the nature of a conditional use permit. I want you to know that in my many years of, of planning consulting and working on, within the planning department, there was an era of time before the hearing examiner was created and incorporated into your system in which we had the planning director being the zoning adjuster. That was the title that they gave him. And he conducted the hearings on conditional use permits and on variances. And then there was an appeal body appointed by the Board of County Commissioners of Citizens called the Board of Adjustment. Why do I mention that? Well, because I sat in the chair as a zoning adjuster. And then when I left the county, the board put me on the appeal board, the Board of Adjustment. And I served on that for, I'm sorry to say, 18 years, three, six-year terms. The only relevance about all of that is that I've listened to conditional use issues, both as a proposal, both as an appeal. And I understand all of that. But what's important is that once in a while, and especially for the hearing examiner, back then, the zoning adjuster, is to have as, as much clarity in the criteria so that there's no mystery about whether he can entertain that as a use. But fundamentally, a conditional use permit, when you're trying to say or anticipate problems, don't standardize that into your zoning code because it will vary with every site that will come before you, that's allowed in that particular zone or, or allowed in several zones, such as this is. It all boils down, in, in particular, this type of use, to its surroundings and to its, and, and that's why they, it's, it's not a permitted outright use in one set of circumstances, even environmentally, but not so in another. So it's not a permitted outright use. It's a CUP. And it's, it primarily up to the hearing examiner to mitigate what is discussed by the participants in the hearing and to put a set of reasonable conditions on it to, as I said, to mitigate. That's what we've got before you now because there was confusion, even internally within staff, the last go-around. Setting aside what Mr. Chesney pointed out, we can't go back to the medical lake site. And we won't. But that particular set of issues was a debate about whether or not bringing an RV on-site was an RV park. And those kinds of things needed clarification. And keep in mind that what we're trying to compare this sporting activity to, in some ways, is like a golf course, allowed in a low-density zone. It can have a clubhouse. It can sell associated supplies, golf balls, golf bags, et cetera. It can have a small ability to serve sandwiches, et cetera. And that's not even questioned for a golfing activity. And those are the kind of accessories that we were doing when we were asked to leave the site we were on. And we want to get back to that again and have what we proved over the course of 130 years to be what, what needed for a viable operation. So we've got to be careful not to standardize into the code things like, for example, we've talked in the past, the subject has come up, maybe there should be a quiet day. No. If before you was something like farm harvesting or farm raising and a conditional use requirement, you would no more think about saying you can't harvest on Sunday. It has to be done when it has to be done in order to sustain the viability of agricultural operation. So don't get into those kinds of issues carelessly, thinking you're helping people to have a quiet day. We need every day that we're, that we can have to, of the week, in order to operate successfully. So I'll stop. I'd like to maybe have a moment at the end to maybe rebut some of the things, so.
Are there any questions from the planning commission of the applicant?
Sorry. I appreciate your testimony. Thank you very much. I do have some issues with the false equivalencies that you've presented in your messaging. A gun range, archery range are not the same as golfing. They're not the same as harvest. So I think that the time and effort that people have brought to these meetings to say that's a lot for our neighborhood is really important for us to consider. And I think that that is important for your applicant to consider. And I do worry about combining retail sales that may have alcohol involved with a firing range. I'm just saying, we just need to make some standardized effort. I agree. You've got to make sure that it's broad enough so that people can at least apply. That's their due process. That's their right. That's their due process. That's their right. But you do need to make sure that there are some regulations in process so that everybody knows what's the playing field. Those are my comments and questions about. Let's not compare this to a golf course or harvest.
I just want to reiterate, gun clubs are not allowed to sell alcohol. Period. Nonprofit business, there's a ton of different businesses, nonprofits in town, a lot of them operate seven days a week. I think we need to look at the whole picture of everything.
Any other questions to the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have any other spokesmen for the applicant itself?
Good morning. I'm Tom Nyhale. I'm president of the Spokane Gun Club and I'm here because my understanding this meeting is to evaluate where we can be and how we can be there. It is not about being on that Thorpe Road property that we own. We know that. Thank you, Mr. Chesney for clarifying. We can't be there. I've been saying that for the last few meetings. We want to sell that property. We've been working with the Shriners to try to do a land swap. That didn't work. They killed that on Monday of this week. So now we're going to our life members because life members have to approve that we sell the property. One of the stipulations I know they're going to do is say, where are we going? Well, we have to have the, the zoning change. And the reason why is that we have multi-day events. And we do that, we did about six. Before we closed, we did six with what are called ATA, uh, Amateur Trap Association events that were one, two, or three day events. Okay. We did about six a year. We did one PETA, which is the, uh, Pacific International Trap Association, event. That was seven days long. We threw over a million targets. We had over 250, uh, people there from Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Montana, and Canada. We did three skeet events through the National Skeet Shooting Association. And those were generally one or two day events. So we need to have multi-day events and they need to be consecutive. In the original con- conditional use permit, the hearing came down and they said, you can, you can't shoot on Fridays. Well, if we have a four-day event, we can't start on Thursday and go to Monday, or we have to start on Wednesday and have people sit around on Friday so they can't shoot. And they said, we couldn't shoot on Sunday. Well, I'm sorry, but we need to have that capability. Well, our primary time of shooting, what's it going to be? It's going to be March through, generally September. We do shoot throughout the week or throughout the year, but the real time for competitive multi-day shooting is going to be in that time. But we're only talking about six, maybe eight different events. Now, you will see that there are, and there, in your information that you receive, there said, there's only five clubs that do, uh, PETA events that are multi-day. Well, there's 11 PETA clubs, uh, or trap clubs in the state of Washington that offer uh, PETA shoots. Some of them are multi-day. I went through their calendar last night and looked at all of what they were doing. I think there's more than five that have multi-day, uh, but some of them have shoots on Wednesday. No, we don't have competitive shoots on Wednesday. We have practice. But a couple of things that we need. We need to have limited retail. There will be no alcohol. And thank you, Mr. Edwards, for bringing out that we cannot have alcohol. We, alcohol and guns do not work. Period. We, you know, we don't like that. Second thing is, uh, Ms. Whitaker, you brought up a very good point about shooting and the, uh, I don't know, pirateite or whatever it's called, the exploding target. You will never see that in a gun range. Can't do it. Okay. From a safety standpoint, we will not allow that. Con, take that to the other extreme. If you go down to off, down I-90 to the Fish Trap exit, you go south on that road and you will see on the right-hand side of the road where people have set up a makeshift rifle range. And they have taken those exploding targets and put out there and in August fired and hit one. And what happened? They set a fire. So what we're trying to get around is having the capability that we can provide the places where people can shoot shotguns, rifles, and pistols safely. Yes, sir.
And those people are doing it illegally.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We're trying to provide the environment where they can be there. We can work with them. We can train them. We can offer the, the ability that they can shoot. Now, back to the zoning change. We're looking not just at, uh, rural traditional, which is where we are today. But we're also looking at large track egg, small track egg, mining and forest, I believe are the, the, the areas. So we're looking for property in Spokane County in those areas. And, but we have to be able to come back and say, this is how we're going to set it up so that it works. We're not going to be the MICA gun range, which has rifles. They have pistol. They are non-conforming. They've been out there forever. We're not going to be double barrel, which is on Elder Road, which I think, uh, Mr. Hassid, you were referring to. You know, they have stuff. We've talked to them. No, we're not going to look at that, that property. We're not going to be Lant Farms, which is a sporting clays course out at, uh, Foremount. Okay. They're out there. They shoot sporting clays. That's all they shoot. They do a number of events and I think most of those are just single day events. Um, but that's, there, it's, it's the sports that people want. Okay. People want it. We have, we see the fastest growing sport is handguns. The next fastest for shotgun is sporting clays. We want to provide those environments for people in a safe environment. And a- again, uh, as I, as I said, we need, we need limited retail. We don't want to have a great big huge gun store. We don't, that's not what we want. But when people come out and shoot and they need to buy ammunition. Somebody comes out and says, hey, I want to look at shooting and gee, I like it, but I need to rent a shotgun. Okay, we can do that. Somebody says, hey, I need a shell vest. They can buy a shell vest or they can buy earmuffs because it's noisy. A gun going off next to your ear causes problems. I can tell you about it. I'm a US Army veteran. You know, VA gave me these things. Yes, sir.
I also want to say like, if you offer those to be able to rent or something like that, you guys have to do your due diligence and you guys have to pull information on the people that are coming into your place.
Absolutely.
Because that's our state law.
Yep.
So we have to be safe. You have protocol and that's what we have to do. If you're going to operate how you want to operate, there are laws in place for that.
Yep. Thank you. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. Uh, what questions do you have for me? And I, and I will say, if you hadn't said what's going on, Mr. Chesney, I would have said, if we had come forward with another conditional use permit for that property, you should reject it out of hand. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Stefan Harvey. I live out in the West Plains. And, uh, I, uh, participate in recreational shotgun shooting, uh, at several of the venues around the county. So I thought I'd come today to talk a little bit about my perspective as a person that participates in this activity and how this particular zoning edit or change would help promote the sport in a safe and responsible manner. So a couple of things that, uh, I would like to clarify. The first is in regards to the shooting activities that are happening outside of the range, uh, I'd have, I'm not clear on the commission's depth of knowledge in the space, but I do understand as a, but both as a recreational shooter and as a hunter that WDFW and BLM both have specific regulations about shooting activities on lands they administer. And so in the case of the exploding target, you're right, that's specifically prohibited. The activity itself, however, is not. So I want to differentiate those two things. And also point out, the reason we have shooting clubs is that is a structured venue uh, to teach individuals to shoot in a safe and responsible manner. Absent clubs, you get what you get. And sometimes people make less than optimal decisions and integrate alcohol into their shooting as an example, and that is reprehensible. Shouldn't happen, but it does. So that's one point I want to make. Uh, I want to address the question about, uh, false equivalency. I take your point very well. Those are different activities, but what I thought I would bring to the table is some of my experience as a competitive shooter. So I shoot sporting clays, which is one of the fastest growing shotgun sports in the nation. If you were to travel to Texas, Georgia, the Southeast, the Midwest, you would see this flourishing in many places at ranges like we're talking about. And I travel for competitive shooting, uh, this past year, myself and my 16-year-old son, uh, traveled to Boise to shoot in the Idaho State Shoot. Uh, have traveled to other places and you'll find commonality in those venues with what you see in these regulations, which is that you have a place that's multi-day. A sporting clays event is typically held Wednesday through Sunday. In fact, um, I'd like to point out to the commission that we have a Washington State Sporting Clays Association that annually holds a state championship. That state championship was held two weeks ago at Nine Mile at Lant Farm Sporting Clays and was a multi-day event. So you've got yourself a situation where that's the reality of competitive shooting. And in all of these, these places, there is definitely a desire to promote shooting sports. The last thing I'll say, uh, to the group is having these ranges promotes particularly with youth shooting, which is part of the mission of the Spokane Gun Club, uh, to, to really create leadership. Um, I know that's the case with my son. He's definitely blossomed as an individual, uh, in, in context of being able to develop his abilities and capabilities. And the final thing I'll say is that, uh, we have a lot of precedent in Spokane County. Lonnie Maylie, who is the current BYU, uh, shooting team coach and a 1992 Barcelona gold medal Olympian graduated from ECU and shot here at a local range. So I think there's a lot of precedent in history and appreciate your time.
If anyone else goes over time, you have that to look forward to. So just, just remember that.
Excuse me. I'll be calling a couple, uh, the first slip I have is from Kevin Obert. And following Kevin will be Michael Durst. I don't know if I said that right. There so. Anyway, Mr. Obert. And we are on a three-minute requested timeline. And, and if someone else has said something you, you want to say, it, it's certainly, I'll come up and just say, I echo these speakers regarding such and such. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kevin Oberst. I'm a lifelong resident of Spokane and, um, I see the time. Thank you. Um, my family has been here forever. My great-grandfather homesteaded land, uh, due east of the Spangle Gun, Gun Club in Spangle, Washington. Um, I've been a firearm safety instructor for over 22 years. Prior to 2019, when the gun club was sold and the high school was beginning to be built, uh, Deb Hartman asked me to come out and host and help out with a new, uh, shooters' day for ladies at the gun club. And that's when I learned that it was going to be sold. I expressed my opinion. I hope that property would be secured before it was sold and the high school was built. But that did not happen. The cart was put before the horse. And now they're looking at putting it west of town. I was just out there helping a farmer last week and I, uh, saw the no shooting zones. I was moving harvesting equipment for him. I saw the no shooting zone signs and I'm like, this is not the right place to put a gun club, even though I'm a pro shooter, I'm a firearm safety instructor, I believe in it, but to put it next to two cemeteries out there to me is just preposterous. Uh, I, if it goes through out there, I probably will not teach firearm safety out there. I'll choose to do it at some of the other clubs or privately in Spokane. I would, I was hoping that when this came about, uh, they would search for land, maybe due south of where the old club was at, or maybe go west of town in a more rural area and not right by the air force base, the railroad and two cemeteries. Um, I would hope that it could be moved to, to a better area that everybody agreed upon, agrees upon. Um, do you have any questions for me? Anyone?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, let me step in again to clarify. The property that the gun club owns cannot be used for this purpose. It cannot, it will not be used. It is not legally able to be used. You can't make that decision. The board can't make, overrule that decision. That is a court decision. That land cannot be used for this purpose.
If, if I could add a, a comment, um, the reason that's the case is that our zoning codes prohibit this activity in a MIA three dash four.
Well,
and then there's other reasons, but.
That's a secondary reason. This is a court decision. This is outside of our control completely. You, you, you can't make a recommendation and the board cannot overrule that court decision.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Michael Durst. I live right across the street from the last proposed, uh, site. 22-year Navy veteran. I'm pro-gun. I served 16 years on Team Three. So I know about gun safety. I know about youth sports. The importance of this code being adopted is this. If this code and these rules existed before the gun club decided to go out there, they would have had a better opportunity to research a better place or join another gun club and expand them like Spangle or something like that. They would have had better options and we could have saved everybody a lot of money, a lot of time. Because it really isn't about what the code currently says, as we know from other issues out on the West Plains. They read the current code and they're like, well, it says, it doesn't say I can't do it. And that's the problem. We don't look at what the code says, okay, I can only have a shooting, you know, Monday through Saturday, not on Sundays, whatever. They go, well, it doesn't say that we can't have rifles. Doesn't say we can't have this. And that's what we developed to these days. You know, and we have 10-acre minimum lots out there, but people are like, well, it doesn't say I can't have, uh, extra two chouses that, that are really a shop, they're a house and I have people living there. The code says there's no RV living out there, but there's people out there living in RVs, the trash codes. But as we expressed, you said, what's the enforcement? Well, the enforcement is, is the complaints, right? There's people out there with school buses, people living in it and stuff like that. It's because this code says they, doesn't say they can't do it and nobody complains, so it isn't enforced. And but then when it comes to a big problem, then it costs us all time and money. So by adopting these new rules, people can actually have a fair chance and say, hey, I'd like to move a gun club out here. Oh, but we can't meet this criteria. Let's go someplace that we can. And that we're not wasting everybody's time and money because that's how it should be written. A gun club is, you know, you know, to have the courage to act, to pull the trigger on the rifle, I tell you, it's very severe. It's a lifelong decision. Accidents happen. They're not called purpose dense. There was a train tracks, there's planes and stuff like that. They need proper code to find a proper place to have this sport that's needed in this country.
Thank you. Anthony Whitehead.
So I'm Anthony Whitehead. I live at 22022 West Thorpe Road. Um, first of all, it's nice to hear some, uh, potential concessions about distances from, uh, properties around Airway Heights and the UGA. I'm, I'm pro-second amendment. I'm a gun, gun owner. I shoot guns. I was in the military as well. But this whole process. But this whole process, the codes were in place. Is that, the problem is, is that people didn't read them. The people that said approve this did not read them. That would have saved the time. They were, it was clear. It was clear in the code that this, this gun range could not exist there. And it's cost our community probably a hundred thousand dollars in legal bills to unravel this. I agree that we need to get specific things, things that they can do and things that they can't do. The hearing examiner that dealt with this basically gave them everything they wanted. This, this uh, this man over here, the representative for the gun club said, oh, they wouldn't give us Fridays or something along those lines. Um, that's not true. They had Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We were trying to get Sundays. We were just hoping to get a day where they didn't shoot. A day where they, people could go to the cemetery, which was right across the road. That was never considered in this process. So what I would like, and I've said this before um, at these workshops, is that I would like a mile distance between a cemetery, long-term care facility, hospital, school and place of worship. I don't think that's unreasonable. I mean, if Airway Heights can have that, I think, you know, this is still a community where, where we live. And I understand that's great. They can't build out there. We'll see about, see if that ever changes. But there needs to be clear limitations about distances. Um, I want to point out a code, an amendment that you guys are going to look at. It's the ZTA zero-zero-three twenty-twenty-four, which is about the weddings and events in, in rural traditional. So this is about allowing that to happen, which is great. But if you go to letter P, it says uh, no amplified music or uh, public address systems. So why is that? Because of the noise. Right? You think that amplified music and uh, and a public address system would be louder than a shotgun going off every four to six seconds? Anyway, please, I would like that distance enforced or put into this code, clear items in this, not vague stuff or hearing.
Thank you. Joseph Manley? And the next one after Joseph will be Dennis.
I, I'm actually here to talk about CPA twelve dash twenty-three, not, not the gun club.
We're, we're just dealing with com- comments right now on the gun club. Okay. So yeah, we'll call you.
But that is twelve twenty-three is
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
Well, no, but, but twelve twenty-three is the gun club, right? Oh, no. Okay.
Twelve twenty-three is one of the comprehensive plan amendments that was carried over from last year. ZTA twelve.
Straighten me out on this, would you?
Uh, yes, that, that uh, will be relevant uh, when we're finished with uh, all of these zoning text amendments, we will be briefing the comp plan amendments before you in anticipation of a meeting in the future.
I see where the confusion is. Okay, thank you. Uh, Dennis Schweickert?
Welcome. I'm Dennis Schweickert and I live within a mile where the proposed gun club was in the Medical Lake area there. And uh, I spoke last month, so I know you guys heard my, you know, concerns about the area and everything at the time. I wanted to thank you for your pointing out that incongruity of comparing a golf club to a shooting gun. The noise is, is an issue. You know, we have two hundred homes out here and so, you know, it, it's not the same. And when I look at the proposed amendment, my first thought was it's gotten worse, not better. This isn't helping us. This is hurting us by making it now an RV park means you're going to have parking lights, floodlights. It's going to change the whole, you know, look and feel of this from being a rural area and, you know, uh, residential housing around there to a commercial and the noise level now of going, you know, seven days a week, you know, the, the conversation was at the last competition they had in seven days, they had over a million targets. Oh my gosh, who knew there would be that many shotguns going off over such a short period of time? And so I think the comments that we've heard from others about concern about the impact of this to those that are in the surrounding areas largely go to the noise issue. I also am a supporter of training kids and adults to use guns effectively. I've been in Boy Scouts, I had been for years before retiring. And, you know, we always had the kids out at, you know, scouting events that involve teaching them how to use, you know, rifles and shotguns and be safe along with all the other things. So um, I think that's our, our biggest concern. Smaller didn't seem to be helpful to us. Um, but if it's easier to acquire, then, you know, so be it. There you go. Bringing in a lot more activity to that particular area where there's wheat fields around there. Now you're going to have RVs there. You're going to have all this other stuff going on. You know, that just dangers that whole area even more. So you know, I would say be aware of that. And I know you've spoken and I appreciated your comments last time and this time about that not being the area. So some of my concern is obviously very personal because of where it's going to go. But, you know, wherever it chooses to go ultimately, I think you do need to consider the people that are around that and the facilities, whether it's churches, cemeteries, schools. Seems unlikely that something would be placed that close to something like that. But, you know, with two hundred people living out there, many of them retired military, and now we have kids coming in as the retired military have passed away. They move in with kids, school buses pick them up at their front doors, hearing gunshots every day as you come and go and all weekend long, it's not conducive to a really healthy environment for kids. And so I would hope that the zoning issues would consider those kinds of dimensions because it is not just a quiet sport like golf. You know, obviously if it was handguns, you can enclose that into a facility. You can soundproof it. You know that there can be burms around it. It's perfectly, you know, more, less impacting if you well.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Peggy Schweickert, please.
Hi, and you just heard from my husband, obviously live in the same place, not far from where the gun range would have been in Medical Lake. And I appreciate the fact that it's not going in there and we have spoken to you before. My next concern then is Spokane County. You know, your role is to set the guidelines for where things will be going in Spokane. I'd hate to see you abdicate that authority by leaving it to a um, a hearing examiner or whatever, whatever the person is that does the review. I'd like to see more uh, definitions in the law or, or your rules. Again, noise is a huge concern for the homeowners. So something, and I don't know how you write it, but again, when you talk about a million shots and you're a mile from where it may be, regardless of it's not going in near us, that's going to concern somebody else in the county. I think there should be something in the guidelines. Another one is congestion. You talk about um, an RV park, forty RVs, cars, that's going to impact that area. So I think those kinds of concerns should somehow be put into the rule that the hearing examiner is going to be looking at. Otherwise, they may just approve it. They're not looking at all those items. I've been to a couple of those already for our um, wrecking yard that went out there and the dump that have been out there. They all get approved, sorry to say. So I'd like to see some more guidance. Um, the other one is lights. We live in the country. I don't know if you guys do. It's, it's dark. We can see this, we can see the uh, the um, stars at night. I imagine there's going to be a lot of lights around it. If they're going to have an RV park, there's got to be lights, streetlights. It's going to change the composition of the area. The hearing examiner needs to know to look at different types of things. So I think you need to get that information somehow into that ruling. So they're looking at those considerations. People talked about distance. That's another one. How far away should they be from homeowners? Sound travels. I don't know if you've been out there when shooting is going on at different places, you can hear really well in the country. And it changes our life. We've got our investments in our houses. This will impact it. And I'm thankful it's not going in Medical Lake. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Stephen Harvey already spoke, so. Sharon Whitehead? And you'll, you'll be followed by Patricia Opricon? Welcome.
So thanks for your time today. Um.
Could you please say your name?
You bet. Sharon Whitehead for the record, West two-two oh-two-two Thorpe Road, Medical Lake, Washington. I, I guess I want you to, you probably wonder why these people keep showing up, right, from Medical Lake when there's been like twelve statements saying it's not going to be there. And I think the deal is, is there's no more trust in the process. And that's what I think you're hearing. Um, I'm just going to tell you our story for a second. So while you're making your decision, you think about how it applies to other people because you have a sliver. There's a whole process. For us, it was a conversation with the commissioner and the gun club about making sure they were taken care of if they sold the property. Well, that ended up being a supersized gun club, not just a gun club. First, out of the middle of thousands of acres of no shooting zone, the county lifted the center out of it and made it a shooting zone. All the community came together, wanted no shooting. They pulled out the acreage to do this. Then there wasn't due process. Barely did we get a notice. You only get a hundred and eighty-five feet away from the property and you get a notice for hearing. You don't know about this stuff. It happens. Then all of a sudden, it's the hearing, it's the code, goes to hearing examiner. I guys, I have to tell you, we had veterans who PTSD showed up. We had people who want to grieve in the cemetery. We had your hearings examiners are constrained to the things that were mentioned, safety and health. Now you're adding environmental, but that's it. They don't really get a look outside the property. We had to go to two different counties when we sued to make sure somebody paid attention to your code. We had to go to Ponderay and Lincoln County when we sued to have those counties interpret your code because a hearings examiner didn't do it. I would have loved one day a week. I, this is the first time I heard about Friday. It sure wasn't in the process at all. But not many people have the resources to not have the code followed and pursue it through due process, right? They don't have it in your county. So when you're looking elsewhere and you're trying to apply this, you need to understand there's a flaw in your system. Your, and your governance process, because you guys are the, you're the line. It goes to the commissioners after this and then it's done. And there isn't stuff in there that takes care of the people around it. Hearings examiners does not consider the people around. They look at the property, the constraints. They missed the cemetery in this situation. They missed air far, air far, air, Fairchild's code. We had to go outside of our own county. We're not being governed. That's the problem here. That's what you're hearing is no trust. So I'm with you. You've got to get in this code and you need to put things in it that don't just talk about, about what a gun club can do, but what they can't do. Because your hearings examiners aren't going to do that for you. Enforcement, I'm sorry. We've had other code changes to put stuff out there. You call, nobody comes. Nobody comes. You complain, nobody shows up.
Thank you.
Look out for the rest of the county. I guess that's what I'm asking you to do.
Patricia? And Patricia will be followed by Connie Kada, Kada?
My name is Patricia Aprigan. I reside at uh, West two-two one oh-two uh, Thorpe Road. Um, and first of all, I want to thank you for your participation. I want to concur with my sister, as you can imagine, she looks just like me. Um, but I also want to let you know that that is directly misresented, represented in the staff report. And I'm going to talk more about that later. The staff report tells a whole different story as that is being presented to the board of commissioners about how only the gun club did all of this. The gun club was put through three court cases to be forced into this spot. And that should be in that staff report along with other things. Read it again and see what they represent as the story of why this is before you. Okay. Um, I want you to take a wide-angle approach at this amendment. Forget the gun club, just pretend that it's just you've got, you know, new ground. You're just looking at the report. By dropping the acreage limit from forty to twenty, you're going to increase the number of potential sites in the rural traditional zone, which is the most populated zone of all these zones that are being, you know, limits are being determined. That means it will not only allow the SGC to do what they want and have more potential zones, but anybody else, including me. I can go buy a twenty-acre parcel and put a gun range on it with a CP, a private gun range, and since you've married a gun range with RV facilities, which by the way, are not even allowed in any other part of the rural traditional zone, you're encouraging people to basically pursue gun ranges in order to get RV facilities. And again, there is no enforcement on this after it's all processed. Somebody with a certain amount of wealth could do this anywhere they want and just promise some noise mitigation. And I, I really think that increasing it is probably the biggest nightmare that the planning department could do. Defin- definitions like multi-day targeted competitions. If I decide to shoot half of a competition on one day and half the competition on the next day, and it's only thirty minutes each day. I know I'm being ludicrous about this, but just remember what these things really say when you pull back and a lawyer rolls in here. Okay? Um, I often, I also have to con- concur with many people I've talked to that my biggest disappointment when I read, was when I read the staff report. As citizens, we have many expectations of how our input into the political process is handled. I was particularly affronted when they set aside all public input describing it as only a site-specific conditional use permit. They discounted everything we've said for the last four years. They've actually in the minutes discounted a lot of what you've said, if you go back and look at your minutes. We experienced along with the gun club, a four-year ordeal. My sister talked about the lawsuits we had to do. The per, the people who came to this hearing gave you substantive information that could be applied to reviewing this code for any I want to thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Connie? It should be followed by Joseph Young?
My name is Connie Kada. I live at one-eight-two-oh-five East Riverway Avenue, Spokane Valley. Um, I wanted to mention uh, my agreement in in looking at the staff report. I think of how many of us have come and spoken here. And when I read that, it didn't, it, it, it mentioned the um, Veterans Cemetery, but it didn't mention the Medical Lake Cemetery. Um, I thought the staff report was biased and incomplete and poorly done. By granting this text amendment that will directly and negatively affect the neighbor, neighbors of massive commercial sporting complex, you are blankly allowing expansion without considering their neighbors. Granting the text amendment will only benefit the Spokane Gun Club and will surely expose the county to further litigation. In fact, the Spokane Gun Club doesn't have a building site yet. It only makes sense to me that each gun club apply for whatever permits they need for their particular business. And the county can decide if that's compatible with that particular community and location. This text amendment is foolish and it's in violation of county code. It should not proceed. One additional thought, my friend Janice Radmer just mentioned, you might not have booze at a gun club. But do you think anybody will have it in those RVs?
Thank you. Joseph Young? Welcome.
Hi, my name's Joseph Young. I live on Brooks Road, straight away. Gun club will be right out my front window. I don't want it. Um, I've uh, was born, raised on the West Plains. I live there yet. Uh, my family lives there. My kids, grandkids live there. I've been there for seventy-one years. I'm probably the second in the general area, uh, the second oldest person farming there. Um, I farm fourteen hundred acres uh, along Brooks Road and in the area. Um. My dad was a, a state champion for three years in the twenties of trap shooting in the mid nineteen twenties, I should say. I'm pro-gun. I don't shoot all the time like I used to. I don't have time. Um. I get a, got a kick out of his comparison to a golf club for crying out loud. Golf club's nice and quiet. There's no bang. There's going to be continuous noise all day long, seven days a week. No, thank you. Um. Currently Spokane County is in a no shooting uh, because fire danger. That was on the news. I don't know. I haven't heard it since, but it was like Monday night. Uh, I hope you leave the codes alone, current. And I'll be real. And I'll be real quick about things here. I love the peace and quiet that is present now. Traffic's not bad. All this will go away if Spokane Gun Club is allowed to build. Uh, I am against anything Spokane Gun Club wants other than to go somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Kada?
My name is Jean Kada. I live at 18205 East Riverway Avenue in Spokane Valley. I spoke at the last meeting. I gave my comments both verbally and written at that meeting. The issue, location, location, location. We were assured by the gun club participants at the last meeting that they were not locating across Thorpe Road from the Medical Lake Cemetery. And that that specific property was currently for sale. From what I've heard today and what I've heard previously, I, I, I don't know. I don't see any for sale signs. I, I, uh, haven't, haven't seen any real estate listings. So I, I don't know what's up there. The proposed, uh, revision of the code suggests that the hearing examiner may provide conditional approval that addresses environmental, uh, compatibility and best management practices and mitigation. What, what does environmental compatibility mean? And what are best management practices? The current process requires the cultural and anthropologic, anthropological evaluation be made within the site, the property site lines. The proximity of the cemetery was ignored when it, when it was on the, on the Washington State Heritage Register. No matter what gun club or what location, the surrounding area should be examined for environmental compatibility and best management practices. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last slip I have to speak on the gun club. Is there anyone in the audience that I, that? You can, you can come up and just introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm, uh,
microphone's right there.
Good morning. Hi, how are you? Uh, I'm William Keon. Um, I'm a Vietnam vet, by the way. Uh, I've always had guns. I've been a member of this, uh, Cheyenne Gun Club for many, many years. And, um, but anyway, um, I have an established farm on Thorpe Road. For over half a century, my family has enjoyed the peacefulness of living in the country. I live right alongside the Medical Lake Cemetery, right across from the entrance where the gun club would be proposed to be going into. So, um, I'm retired. I wanted to continue to enjoy the solitude. The proposed gun club site is located directly across from my homestead. Several lots on Brooks and Thorpe, which join the proposed sites have been sold. Some have had already been built. Um, everyone who has bought lots or were already established expects being living in a quick, uh, rural setting. Uh, other lots adjoining our property on Thorpe will be sold for home sites in the future. I am vehemently opposed to, um, a gun club in this area. I would detrimentally affect the value of, of our homes and property on or near Brooks and Thorpe Road and McFarland. The noise will disrupt our beautiful, peaceful area that we all, that we all love. Let me ask the people who propose this and those who will make the final decision, would you like this gun club to be near your back door? Does anybody want to respond to that? If you stepped out your back door for an evening in the, um, you, we, we have a, we have a area where we, there's, um, on Thorpe, Brooks and McFarland, you're completely circled by housing areas. Is there any reason why, plus the, plus the graveyard? Is there any reason why it has to be established in this area? It doesn't seem practical for me. It seems kind of ridiculous. But I'm sure the gun club's got enough money. They can go where they want to and buy the property they want to without being, trying to establish right in the midst of a square, big square area of miles where it's established homes and property owners. So I don't know what this is going to do to our property, uh, when we decide to sell the rest of it on Thorpe Road. We go all along Thorpe Road. We border the gun club ostensibly. Plus we also boarded the gun club down Brooks Road, which we've sold the houses there now and, and there's houses being established there and, and already there.
Please, your three minutes is up. I said your three minutes is up. We want to, if you could wrap it up.
You could be giving me 10 anyways, but that's okay.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public that wanted to testify today? Mr. Chesney?
Commissioners, uh, thank you for your attention. And, uh, we have before you the proposed amendment. Uh, as is with many things, uh, this is replacing something that was, uh, uh, older and really not relative, not contemporary. Uh, it has been, uh, vetted through this group and you've heard public testimony. Uh, I, I want to, uh, one more time assure most of these residents that this property is not going to be used for that. And I, I think we've also heard that, uh, they, they're concerned about any place a gun club may go in the county. And so those are, are valid concerns and yet those are, that's exactly why this would be using a conditional use permit. Uh, planning staff on any application will be looking at all of those elements. Uh, and, and like I said, as, as Melissa noted, uh, there's a lot in, you know, environmental conditions or best practices. Each of those will be assessed individually at the time of every individual application. And that will be, uh, sent to the hearing examiner. The hearing examiner, uh, for those that are unfamiliar with that, gets a staff report. We publish that, uh, at least two weeks ahead of the hearing. The hearings are public. They take public testimony as well as testimony from, uh, planning staff and the advocate. So in every case, there is a chance to address the very specific nature of an application at the time of its, uh, uh, approval or consideration. Um, with that, uh, I would, I would suggest that, uh, you consider Airway Heights, uh, comments as a friendly amendment. And if, and if you would, if you would vote on that first, then we would ask you to recommend the potentially amended resolution to recommend this to the planning or to the board of county commissioners for approval.
Let, let me interrupt for just a second. Would it be appropriate now to close public testimony?
Yes.
Is there a motion to close public testimony?
Still moved.
Second, said by Clyde. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes, and I abstain. It passes 4-0. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I guess I'll just get us started off, um, with the amendment that staff recommended. So make a motion to amend the proposal before us to add a new condition, um, as condition I, um, that shall state, quote, "Site shall be no closer than half mile for archery range and one mile for any gun range from any city or urban growth area boundary." And I'm looking for a second.
Second. Lonnie? Your second? Oh, Melissa? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
I'll just say this seems like common sense to me. It's coming from one of our agency partners and I'm going to support this.
Melissa?
I, I too. I have immense respect for the planning director at Airway Heights. Um, Ms. Troutman has got years and years of experience in the planning field. Uh, so I heartily recommend this.
Any other discussion? I would like to have Mr. Edwards answer or comment on it.
Uh, for them?
Yes.
I agree with the half mile and the mile.
Any other comments? Call for the question?
Question. I call for the question.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here's the pass 4-0. I abstain.
The motion before you then includes this amendment and the, uh, at least one option for that would be to recommend the motion, recommend as amended, the zoning text language be approved by the board of county commissioners.
I'm going to make a couple more amendments to the proposal first and see if there's some support with my fellow commissioners. Uh, my first amendment is, uh, that there be no alcohol. So, uh, the same idea, adding another condition. I don't care if it's condition I, I don't care if it's condition J, or if it fits better after, or even in the section about, um, food services. But I'm making an amendment that the condition be added that no alcohol consumption be allowed on site. And I'm looking for a second. I, well, I just have one more. Um, I'm going to make one more amendment. I understand this one's probably going to be maybe the hardest, but I still think I'm going to put it out there. Um, the same sort of language, same sort of additional condition. Um, "Site shall be no closer than half mile for an archery range and one mile for any gun range from any public school, public park or cemetery." And I'm looking for a second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I'll just say, uh, we've heard a lot of public feedback. The best I can turn the public feedback into something that makes this code better is the amendment that I just proposed. I know that it's not perfect and that it may make the gun club's life more complicated, um, in finding a new site. But I think it's reasonable. I hope that it makes some of the public feel like we hear you and that, that we're trying. Um, and I think that ultimately it just makes a better piece of code and gives the hearing examiner some bounds from which to work. And I hope that my fellow commissioners will support it.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair? Staff has no objection to that amendment.
Someone want to call a question?
I'll call for the question, please.
All those in favor of the motion as amended by Logan's comments, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I abstain. Passes 4-0.
Uh, and now I move to moot the, uh, that we approve or that we recommend for approval by the board of county commissioners, ZTA 01-23, as amended three times here in this meeting and as staff has reflected. And I'm looking for a second.
Your second? No, no one's going to second the motion to recommend the planning commissioners approve this?
Second.
Second by Lonnie. Any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I, obviously this is something that matters a lot to the public. It's probably the fullest the room has been or close to it since I've sat up here. Um, appreciate all your feedback and your comments. Um, I appreciate the gun club trying to find a solution. I, I understand their use and I desire to continue this use. Um, I hope that the amendments don't make that overly complicated and that you can still do that. And, um, yeah, I'm going to be supporting this and I hope the county commission does too.
And I just want to say that, you know, when, obviously sometimes when you go out and you hear people shooting, because I hear people shooting around my place sometimes or whatnot, but everybody is different. And obviously I respect everybody's personal property. I would never come onto somebody's property and be like, without knocking on the door or something, right? Or I'm, I'm a person of respect. Back to one comment earlier about, you know, the alcohol. Yeah, we, it's, it's hard to, uh, manage anybody if they sneak alcohol in, in an RV or, or anything like that. But we do have, we do have a place of, of laws and, and accountability. Now is every gonna, is everybody gonna mine the law? Or are there ever people that break the law or like the, how the fire got started on Medical Lake from an explosion? Those are people that are doing things illegally. These people are trying to do things right. And, and I, I feel that everybody deserves a little bit of due respect here on this situation.
Lonnie, I would agree with you. Um, I've been quite quiet on this subject. Um, I too have been in military and I too live close by a couple of gravel ranges and I do hear that. So I'm, you know, distances, I fully understand and I'm trying to be so respectful to everybody's feelings here. And sometimes it's a give and take program that we have to work and we have to have a system that can be worked with. And Scott has got broad shoulders, don't you? Um, but I,
Do our best.
I always believe that we have to be responsible individuals in the community and, and we need to look across the table and say, hey, I got a neighbor there and I got a neighbor there. And so I'm, I'm being, I'm going to have to say that, uh, I'm happy that we've come as far as we have here this morning. Uh, do we have more distance to go? Yes, but we all need to participate in this discussion and, and I'm willing to move forward and let's get this voted and move on to the next one. I'm ready.
I'm just going to make one final plug and that is for code enforcement. And there needs to be a funding mechanism. And I agree with the complaint-driven process, but there's got to be somebody to answer the call and come out and enforce. And there has to be sufficient backbone, I guess is the word I'm looking for, behind it to enforce it and to say, here's your fine. You want to do this again? Then it goes up by day. So I'm just making a plug for enforcement.
Uh, if I could for a moment, we have been having a discussion, uh, with the chief deputy, uh, DPA and several of the commissioners about, uh, reforming or refining the code enforcement code compliance mechanism in the county today. Because it, it, uh, the, uh, the, the calls that I get are going up almost exponentially. And we have two, on, on the zoning code enforcement, we have two people to cover the entire county. Uh, building doesn't even have technical code compliance. They send building inspectors out and the sheriff sits out and the health district sends people out. We're looking and talking seriously about how we can reform that to go from using just a criminal code to using the civil code, which would allow fines as well as compliance. So, uh, there, there's nothing imminent. There's nothing we're ready to announce, but it's a discussion that is underway.
I would like to make the comment, thank you, Scott. Cause you know where I've been a long time on this board.
I do.
And you know, I have not backed off on that one enforcement. Why are we sitting up here wasting our time if we can't enforce it? So I got another colleague sitting down here, but, and I hope we can deal with that. Thank you. Let's move on.
Any other comments from the planning commission? Ready to call a question? All those in favor, let's do a voice vote or an individual vote. And all those in favor signify by saying, Logan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Lonnie?
Aye.
Clyde?
Aye.
And I'm abstaining, so the motion passes forward or nothing. And you have a, a motion prepared for us to sign today or, or next meeting? And I'm abstaining, so the motion passes four to nothing. And you have a a motion prepared for us to sign today or or next meeting or?
I suspect staff needs to do a little work to add those amendments.
Right, yeah.
I that's what I figured, yeah.
Right. We will, we will.
If I could before folks leave Scott, so I just wanna thank the public again for coming and voicing your perspective and I know it's um, Thursday morning. It'll, you know, ten o'clock and so I appreciate you being here and um, I think that you all being here helps us make better policy and. I recommend better policy and so thank you for that.
Mister Chairman, uh, I know this is after the fact, but yeah, we should probably check our electronic audience to see if anyone has comments.
Yeah, uh, motion to reopen the public testimony if that's what we need to do. Well, I guess let's check first if it's necessary. Is there anybody online or with a hand raised or something?
Okay.
Great, never, never mind.
Um, if I could interrupt here for a second, it's now ten thirty. Could we recess for five minutes to have a? Restroom break and then we'll return here at um, let's just say twenty minutes to eleven.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, thank you. Uh, our second zoning text amendment today relates to uh, small scale meat processing facilities. We have. Some information for you. And so what we've, this was a constituent driven request through our commission. Uh, and as you recall, we've had several workshops on this. Uh, there are a number of uh, farmers and ranchers that are very much in favor of this project. And so it's essentially creating the ability for an operation to process meat and sell it at retail. And that requires a USDA notification. Next slide. So we've put some conditions in place. You've seen them uh, several times now. There are in the staff report as well. Uh, they're talking about distances. We're talking about uh, environmental protections. Next, please. And the rather than put uh, a discussion of size, and when we say small scale, that that's somewhat deliberate deliberately ambiguous. But to control that, we've said or we're suggesting that the facility not be attached to a feedlot. And that would prevent uh, the size of the facility from growing into a multi dimensional thing. Next, please. So similar uh, for the rural traditional um. Standards, this would be for both sides. You can see again and and as always, uh, there's the opportunity for the hearing examiner to take. Other considerations into account that would be on an individual case by case basis as defined in a staff report. Okay, that's the simple solution for this Z T A. We would welcome your and public comments for your benefit.
Aye. Mister Chairman, I have a question, uh, and mine is a simple one. Uh, did we not at one time say that would bear there be no overnight? Is that in there?
No, we we it was during the discussion of of size and the overnight prohibition changed into a prohibiting a feedlot. And and the reason for that is if there was one or two head of cattle, if it was a busy day. And they and the processing facility could get through ten of the twelve cattle that they that they were processing. We didn't see a need to uh, restrict it explicitly to overnight storage. But the feedlot prevents it from going into a commercial scale project.
Can I just finish up Logan alone on 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 my thought? Have we cleared some of that language up with people that are in this kind of business? I mean.
Yes.
I mean, is that acceptable? I mean, I I have no idea. I'm not involved in this slaughterhouse.
Well, we uh, we certainly potentially could hear from uh, citizens today. But the ones that we've heard from before have been supportive of this. Our planning staff has talked to them directly. They have talked with USDA. Uh, we have vetted this to the point where we're comfortable bringing it forward. Recognizing that uh, you know, good should never be the enemy of perfect. And that all codes can be refined as you find reason to do so, but we we feel this is sound and ready to come forward for initial consideration.
Thank you.
Uh, my only question was, there is a definition in the zoning code for feedlot. Staff looked at that and felt like it was still. It it does what it needs to do, yeah?
Yes.
Cool. Yeah, I'm I'm ready to support this. I mean, obviously, I don't hear public feedback, but. Like we've heard from the public, it seems like this is a need. The code is preventing this need from being met and we should try to um, alleviate that. Yeah. Yeah.
So you have the applicant or any anyone in favor of this?
We are the applicant.
Pardon?
We are the applicant.
You are the applicant.
Yeah.
But any of this is it citizens who uh, initiated or or any public testimony?
I don't have any yellow.
They have previously testified before you. Um, a couple of them had uh, called, contacted us and and saying. Why are you still talking about this? We we thought we were gonna be approved and we're busy and we don't wanna take another day to drive in and sit and wait and talk. I I expressed that we we uh, we have their comments and approval. They didn't need to come down and restate it, so.
Great.
We kinda left them off, but.
Thanks for clarifying that.
The motion to close, oh, is there anybody on?
Let 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 me, let me make a call out. Is is there anyone in the audience here that wants to testify? Would like to open the public test, open for public testimony. Anyone here to speak? On this topic? Anyone online? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close public testimony?
So moved.
Second, second by Lonnie. All those in favor of closing public testimony signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes five zero.
Uh, Mister Chairman, we do have comments from um. Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife that added some detail to the standards of how carcasses should be disposed of and and manure. And other things handled. Um, I don't know, I believe this was distributed to you, but in any case, we support these amendments. Or or this as an amended and I would ask uh, that you uh, consider amending the initial report to include the Department of Fish and Wildlife recommendations.
Mister Chairman, are we not mandated to abide by their guidelines?
Yes, we are. However, I mean, that said, there's. There are two ways to to enact this small scale slaughterhouse. One is under. Washington State Department of Egg Regulations, the other is USDA. We're choosing the USDA model because that allows the processor to sell the product at retail. The fish and wildlife regulations likely apply in any case, but since we're not operating under specifically the state's standards. We would recommend adding them to our rec our amendment.
Any staff or planning mission discussion on the proposal by Mr. Chesney? Don't have a motion yet. Someone wanna make a motion to?
So I'll make a motion that we accept it as has been proposed to us by Mr. Chesney at this time.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye to accepting the motion to amend.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Discussion?
No, that's it.
I guess we're out of time.
Make a motion to approve.
I think we're done, right? We did we amend any? Oh, did we do that amendment? We just added that language?
Yes.
Got it. Now I make the motion to finally approve it. Or to recommend for approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
Any further discussion? Call for a question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Our third item uh, is a very simple text amendment. This is in in. Request from uh, originally the mayor of Medical Lake uh, through our commissioners. It allows a change of how we handle. Uh, temporary uses and it's related, of course, to the gray uh, and Oregon road fires. Nope, try to get uh, next, please. Uh, so the current code, you can see it in bold there, is a temporary use permit is for six months with a one time extension. Next, please. Uh, we're adding uh, some time to that. Next, please. And the language is here. Uh, we're striking that six month period and we're uh, duh. Giving the planning director discretion to grant annual twelve month extensions upon written cause about uh, with justification. And as you heard before, the the very basic element of this is some of those affected by those two fires may take. Well more than six months or a year to even start rebuilding and this allows. Uh, them to occupy a temporary structure on their property for really as long as it takes, as long as they're making some progress. The the permit does require uh, the temporary use structure to be removed at the time of occupancy of a permanent structure. So it's, it doesn't become an A D U by default. But it does allow them to continue moving without being in violation of our code.
Mister Chairman, I have a question and and Scott. If if I was a victim of the gray road fire and so forth and I got my act together and I started working on the process and and and. Got the permits accordingly, but my neighbor was lazy. Is how long is he gonna have to play lazy? I mean. Do we not have respect for other? I'm just, I'm being the devil's advocate on this one.
Uh, respecting your neighbor is not part of government code. And so this, this is, this is a very permissive statement, but it also has a, you know, for cause statement. Someone that's making no progress at all uh, would have that permit revoked.
Yeah, I think that's what makes me feel comfortable. I hear you Clyde, but I think that's what makes me feel comfortable. Obviously, we're relying on some good judgment from the planning director. But I think that we can count on that. Um. So yeah, you know, that's what makes me feel good about it. If you're moving forward, I would feel for a neighbor who's gone through the process, but it's like, you know. A disaster that they had no control over and I feel like we should be pretty deferential to letting them get back on their feet.
I guess I would just have. I feel that the responsibility of the county is to help people move forward and I think. Um, but I also have, I don't wanna be in their their business, but I. You can't just leave it open forever, but. I don't know. Maybe I should even, I should back off. Okay, I'm sorry.
Let me just actually play the thought experiment a little bit. So somebody is living in a temporary structure on their property that that was destroyed by the fire. And they're not making any progress. It's been three years. Maybe their neighbor is complaining now. Um, this is hypothetical, obviously. Um. And and so the planning director decides, okay, no progress is being made and now your extension for this temporary use has been revoked. That would just mean that the person now needs to vacate the site, um, take their trailer off the site, but it wouldn't necessarily force them to. Build on the site at that point, right? There's nothing we can do to do that. So it would just basically force them to take their trailer somewhere else and obviously the enforcement challenge of that as well.
Right, and and revoked is is probably uh, the wrong language for this. It's simply that the permit would not be renewed.
What about people having problems with their insurance company if they're trying to?
Yeah, I mean, that's uh, to me, that's well within the criteria that that a planning director would use to grant a uh, an extension.
So it doesn't necessarily need to be physical progress on the ground. If I came into your office as one of the impacted people and said, here's my exchanges with progressive home insurance right now. We're we're fighting about these items that I'm sticking on and I want included in the rebuild. Can you please give me another six months so I can keep having this fight? That's the kind of thing that would count as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Do we have any public testimony on this? I don't see you have any slips here.
No.
Um. If I may divert from my job of being just a. Encourager of comments, I've dealt with two personal large fires and they are very devastating emotionally. They're they they cost a lot of time. There's a lot of, and I had a chance to take my grandson fishing in Silver Lake. And what I saw was probably the most heartbreaking sight I've seen is you look out there at the number of the and to to. To condition those people who are going through what they're going through, I I I I. I tend to lean on the side of tolerance, not. But anyway, it just, it was a very sad sight, to say the least, and I know how difficult it is to get through all the sepa stuff.
And just um, along that line, Spokane County Building and Planning has helped uh, Medical Lake. I mean, in in permitting and helping to move things along with, you know, even their own staff. Uh, as you might imagine, they're much smaller staff than we are, so we we have offered to help them in almost every way we can to uh, make their. Workload more manageable and also with, for example, uh, you mentioned Silver Lake. An awful lot of those properties were built before the shoreline management program was in place and the critical areas was in place. We have made a finding that if they are rebuilding substantially as they were. And no closer to the water than they were, they do not, they don't have to go through a shoreline management program because most of them, most of that property wouldn't qualify anymore. It's if it was built too close to the water by current standards. They can expand landward and they can expand laterally. Limited footprint, uh, but if someone had a, you know, fifteen hundred square foot cottage and wanted to replace it with a four thousand square foot three story home. Um, no, now you need to go through the the regular process. But we've provided some discretionary relief uh, that that lets them kind of rebuild on their footprint as well.
So. Uh, Mister Chesney, thank you. And yeah, my heart breaks for. Everybody that's trying to figure that out. Um. But the temporary. Um. Habitation is. How how is it? Made fit for human habitation and like through all weather conditions and are the?
We are being very liberal in that interpretation. If, for example, uh, one company is outfitting shipping containers with uh, you know, habitable facilities. Uh, as long as they can hook that up to their former septic field and and well, they're they're good. Uh, there is still the technical prohibition against living in an RV for more than thirty days. Uh, and we're not changing that policy, but we're also gonna be very liberal in how we interpret any complaints that come about that. For the fire areas specifically. This one does, this would be countywide, so if if something else happens, it allows that. But a a temporary use still must meet code standards uh, and health safety standards.
Okay, and. Are the. Temporary authorizations that are granted by the planning director, are they being? Monumented, memorialized in some way so that there's some like, okay, so.
Yes.
We've got precedent now and these are the ones that we've.
Sure. When when someone comes in uh. To our shop and says, I'm ready to rebuild. What do I need to do? And that they've got a set of plans or something. We start a permit file for them. This determination would be placed in that file in the smart gov system that that they could look up electronically for themselves. The builder could look up and say, yep, you got a permit, I can do this. So they it's it's a becomes part of their permanent record.
Can I have a clarification on your recommendation, please?
Sure, what can I do for you?
Okay, can you clarify the time again?
The time?
It's a non-ending?
Yes.
But but needs to be renewed every six months, is that right?
It provides a twelve month. A twelve month temporary use permit that may be extended indefinitely, but only for cause.
But they have to apply every twelve months?
Yes.
Okay. That I, that I like, okay.
Motion to close public testimony. Alright. I'll make a motion, uh, motion to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approval of Z T A. Zero zero two dash two zero two four in relation to um, temporary uses. Um, I needed for the Oregon Road and Gray Fires and I'm looking for a second.
I have, sorry to bring this up again. My. If we have an absent uh, homeowner or property owner. And they over, they lost track of. The one year, I mean, are, I mean, when they're not present on the property, uh. Is that gonna be given special consideration? I mean, I I'm just trying to think of all the odds and ends.
We have no interest in forcing action. To someone that's not ready to go. If they if they miss a deadline, we're going, and we don't do this for most permits. Uh, Platts, we do. We we send out a notice saying your plat expires in six months unless you do something. Uh, Platts, we do, we we send out a notice saying your plat expires in six months unless you do something. If if we see one of these expire, um, we'll probably send the letter to, you know, the last known taxpayer address.
That's.
But if somebody comes in four months late and says, I forgot, but here's what I'm doing, uh, I I don't. Like, again, there's there's discretion. Any decision that the planning director makes that's related to code can technically be appealed. So if if we were to grant them an extension that was six months later, four months late, someone could appeal that, but I don't know why, I don't know why they would.
Okay, um, thank you for clearing that up. I was concerned about that.
Could, do you know if the city of Medical Lake has also passed a similar um sort of rule change to allow for this, or if they're just being flexible? Okay.
I don't.
Cool. No worries. Thank you.
You know, considering that the mayor was the first one to propose this, it seems likely that.
They're support, they're supporters, so.
Yeah, cool. Uh, no, no, they they had, they do have their own permit staff. We offered to help them just because of the workload.
All in favor of approving this motion as proposed, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, our next zoning text amendment is on utility scale wind energy generation facilities. Uh, now, as a kind of introductory remark, we are opening a public testimony today, a public hearing for testimony, rather. Uh, however, we're asking you to continue that rather than act on it today so that we can accept more comment over the next few weeks from the public via our electronic systems. And then when uh we have all of those comments aggregated and considered, we will come back and uh re have the second part of this public hearing, and at that time, we would ask for your recommendation to go to the board. So this this one is, we're going to start today with with people that have showed an interest, and then we will continue this for further discussion. There we go. Got ahead of ourselves here, my apologies. So, uh, what we're doing is looking at at the start, we're looking kind of five broad statements that are guiding our work. Uh, and they're, uh, each of them offer a a set of policies that will kind of, we'll we'll go through each of these five to show you our thinking at this stage of the game. And also another reminder, some, the first draft of what the code language might look like was in your folders, was posted to our web. Others can look at it. Uh, these, of course, are are summary statements that are being made. Uh, but it's, yeah, obviously, it's critical for Spokane County to protect its current economy in ag. Uh, and that's a a big effort. It's also a GMA mandate uh to uh have land uses that degrade or de-designate our resource lands is strongly prohibited by, or at least strongly discouraged by GMA. You have to go through a very rigorous process to do that. Uh, but you can also see that fourth point, economic benefit for farmers. We recognize uh the ag economy is volatile, always has been, yeah, always will be. Uh, this does provide an income stream that can offset a bad crop year or bad yield of some kind. So we're recognizing that there's there's a lot of moving pieces to this, so to speak. And then wildlife protection as well, uh, we'll get to that, too. Uh, among other things, there are many studies about wildlife protection, uh, but we're also sitting right on top of the Turnbull National Wildlife Refuge. So ag lands, a couple of policies discourage conversion and really, you know, put these in appropriate areas. Uh, airports, uh, same thing, and this is a, this is related specifically to aviation. But one of the things we have heard related to this is crop dusting. Uh, very risky for a small plane laying fertilizer or pesticide over crops to be navigating through a series of wind turbines. So there's that aspect as well. Renewable energy policies. Economic benefits. And, you know, protect wildlife, protect ag. Habitat corridors as well. Now, the the permitting process for this is uh silent in Spokane County, which is why we're having this exercise. The state, though, has an energy facility citing committee called FSEC that was created a few years ago because the statement is these are uh projects of statewide significance and no particular jurisdiction should be able to prohibit them when this is benefiting potentially the entire state. The FSEC committee has the power to preempt a local regulations. Uh, that said, we are, uh, we want to promulgate these regs so that uh, they have to at least respect what's on the books for Spokane County as a statement of public policy values that will go from you to our commissioners. If the applicant chooses to go through the county process uh and does so successfully, you know, that it's no different than any other project, one once these are in place. If they either disliked the county's policies or wanted to go straight to the state, they could do that as well. If they go to the state, the FSEC committee creates a chair at that table for Spokane County. Uh, so even if we're, if we're sort of taken out of our uh own control, we have a chance to sit at the table and talk about uh what are, what are the important values for Spokane County. So these, these are the three processes that are out there now. Uh, I know the chart's hard to read, but it's the comparison between uh ecology, which is putting together that permitting process, the FSEC and potential uh Spokane County rules. And uh, you know, certainly this is available to anybody on our web. So some early best practices, uh, and some of those are fairly obvious. Lock the doors, post a warning sign, but if you don't sometimes put the basics in there, you can, you can forget things. And the uh, the bottom one, you know, safety plans, emergency response is obviously uh critical when something goes wrong or or some catastrophic collapse happens on that. So kind of the uh, what we call the metrics of and best practices, public safety, the technical changes, um setbacks, and there's uh uh, our fellow counties, Whitman County, Kidditas, Benton Counties have been going through this already. So we're, we're learning from them as well as uh our staff looking at national best practices, best available science. So we're, we're compiling a very robust and defensible set of data to help write this code. So the height uh, you can see here and we'll, you know, the turbine heights have increased substantially since these have been first started. As that turbine rotor gets bigger, it can generate more power. So it's it's unlikely this is, excuse me, going to change anytime soon. And you can see in this diagram how they've gone from that ninety eight foot in nineteen ninety to, you know, almost three hundred feet on the land-based ones, almost five hundred feet for some of the offshore facilities. Uh, and this is the chart, charge it, so it shows how that megawatt capacity goes up with the rotor diameter. Uh, and again, same thing, this is showing their capacity, the hub height and the rotor diameter, uh, all going bigger. So for best practices, uh, we're already seeing that limiting the height of the turbine really doesn't seem to make sense. There has to be some room for innovation uh in going this. And what we need to be able to do for that is look at uh the safety factors of what happens if it breaks, if a rotor comes off, if a tower collapses. And there's also uh, you know, aesthetic setbacks that have been brought to concern in in other counties as well. So we're looking at four basic requirements, uh, setbacks from occupied buildings. Uh, setbacks that try to minimize what's called the shadow flicker, uh, which you uh, anybody that's had an uh, an old traditional floor fan that looks through it and sees a light bulb can understand what that shadow flicker is. It's it's that, we're looking through, you know, an old propeller. Boundaries from incorporated places and importantly setbacks from non-participating property owners. So right now, best practice.
Scott, could you clarify a little when you say non-participating property owners? That means like if four property owners adjacent, we're all participating together. They wouldn't necessarily need to worry about the property line, the having a setback to the property line, is that?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Correct.
But if they were, if one property owner says, I'm not participating, then that setback will hold true.
Yes.
Got it. That makes sense. Thank you.
Yes. So the one to one and a half times the height uh is is a common practice now. Uh, Adams and Whitman County are both at one times that. Uh, you can see here, FSEC has has had a recent recommendation of a twenty five hundred foot setback for projects as well. So there, the setbacks are are in flux a little bit. Uh, there have been some uh court cases as well on this that we're researching. And then incorporated communities, you know, uh, a thousand to twelve hundred meters, uh, and you say here that's about seven times. And that's uh from, in a sense, there's a protective layer there that if if that's where in Spokane County, that incorporated area would presumably be also include the edge of the urban growth area. Uh, so if an urban growth area was that far away from the community, you couldn't, you still couldn't put one in there, you'd have to go beyond the more uh urban dense areas. Property lines, again, one point one to one and a quarter, um, Adams County has one and a half. And then the FSEC in uh Kidditas had that four times standard for setbacks. So again, there's a, there's a wide range that we're looking at. And then uh Department of Fish and Wildlife is is stepping in with how to work on some of these things, and they've started quite early. So some of that's, the the science is even kind of getting away from it. But habitat species, uh, prime habitats, seasonal flyways, and the, you know, it's our case specifically Turnbull. We have been shown uh some maps uh that that we we can't substantiate, but we've been shown them by a citizen that outline a number of parcels of property owners that have been approached and have have the the alleged is they have signed some sort of option agreement that if this goes forward, they're ready to bring their land into play. Uh, our southeast part of our county has, uh, the the map there shows dozens of these parcels identified already. And as you move a little bit closer, we show several parcels on the southern edge of the Turnbull uh ranch already. So it's not a totally abstract distinctions. Landowners are being approached and they are signing agreements that if uh if a company comes in, they're ready to move forward. And and we totally understand that. Back to that fourth economic point, is it, it's a totally new income source for those farmers.
Uh, can you help me add on clarification? Um, I haven't seen or heard anybody say anything about the GMA, how are they going to apply to this because we have growth that we're looking at right now for the next twenty years. And and we're trying to be creative up here in the front to say, hey, here's where it's going to be taking place. And and what is GMA saying about these right now, or have they even participated?
Uh, GMA for the moment is silent on on the towers themselves, but that silence also says that uh ag lands, resource lands are to be given priority protection. So for example, if someone were to propose a five thousand acre solar field uh over wheat-producing lands in the Palouse, there would be an instant uh contradiction with the Growth Management Act. Because it would, you know, if you're, if you're covering up the land, you you've got that. The wind uh facilities take uh somewhere, you know, uh about at or less than one acre of land when they're complete. And, you know, presumably, uh, if a farmer had, you know, twenty or forty of those towers and lost forty acres of crop, that's one thing, but the income source from the towers would presumably more than offset the crop loss. So, you know, in that case, is agriculture being degraded? There's a a nuance there, and if it is, is that an incremental degradation that is offset by the public good of providing renewable energy?
Then uh, again, clarification. Hearing some of the guidelines that we're going to adopt as we move forward, and I'm being positive now. Um, but the point being is that how are we going to look at it for our growth pattern for the Spokane County, or has that even been discussed yet? I mean, because that's a big item to where growth takes place.
We are uh at at the direction of the board, um, we are promulgating this code ahead of the twenty twenty six plan update. But we're certainly considering renewable energy in all of its forms as part of the twenty six comprehensive plan. And that will also have geographic attributes to it. Where should it be in addition to what should it be? These towers are generally incompatible with urban areas, and so where our urban growth areas are are not likely to be in conflict with a company that wants to build or land or that wants to uh use these towers, so. It it does not seem to be an intractable issue. I think we can blend these together in good planning policy.
I this just blows my mind, but I was available when the first GMA came through, as everybody knows, I'm old. But the bottom line is, is that that twenty years went by pretty darn fast. And I'm saying we're looking ahead for the next twenty, but then what about after twenty? I I again, we have to be pretty well versed in where we see this happening of the growth, not just for the twenty years, but even beyond that. And I guess that's all I'm, I'm just saying, I, a lot of thought has to be given to it.
Uh, well, uh, yes, of course, I agree completely. There's, there's a basic part that at the moment we're not talking about because we're talking about, you know, separations as if these could go anywhere. There's, these are only going to be built in areas that have a reliable wind pattern. You know, so it's, it's, you know, in addition to urban prohibitions, they have to be in an area that has fairly constant wind, or it doesn't make sense to to put them there. Looking past that twenty year horizon, um, you know, this is a piece of mechanical equipment. It it's going to deteriorate over time. It's going to need maintenance. Energy can change a lot in twenty years. Um, there's a demonstration project on the small site nuclear uh project going on in Hanford right now. Uh, if nuclear power makes a comeback in that sense, you know, is, when these uh are ready to be uh worn out, uh, would they be uh economically feasible to rebuild if there's a different source of energy that's at or more competitive on a smaller footprint? So we we can't predict the future in that sense, but we also have, as uh you saw upfront, one of the, one of our policy points is in fact decommissioning. Uh, that, you know, much like a mineral lands project, we want to see a reclamation plan bef as part of the permit process. What happens when this comes out? What are you going to do to to, you know, repair the land, or I should say, replace the land? So, uh, oh, I jumped past that. So we're we are looking at at the visual, I'm sorry, Melissa.
Um, I I do have a question. Well, I have two questions, but you can address them as you go through here. One, is slope being considered? So I, you know, when you're saying maybe it'll be four hundred and twenty-two feet, well, is that going to be on the top of a ridge, or is it going to be like from ground level or, I mean, how do we work with that? And then there's also wetlands and intermittent seasonal wetlands and like salty flats and other areas that are outside of Turnbull, so those are wildlife.
Most critical areas are already protected from any kind of intrans intensive development. And this, now, FSEC, where our state could not overrule that directly. Uh, they did, uh, in one project that's being proposed in the Horse Heaven Hills area. I I believe it was maybe as many as five hundred uh rotors were forecast, and about half of those were uh cut out of the project by FSEC in protection of uh hawk habitat i in the area. Uh, they made that recommendation to the governor, and the governor essentially, I don't say vetoed, he said, no, you find a way to bring this back to full strength instead of make it half strength. So there, there are tensions uh in this entire process, which is why we believe it's very important for the county to have its set of policy directions in place to be able to negotiate that with an FSEC or a governor. No, but we are, as you mentioned, the visual resources is is that, you know, the the height is measured from the ground. But the visual setbacks can be taken into account so that uh, you know, if if that's the case, we're trying to minimize some of that intrusion on the landscape. Or at least it's a criteria to example. Uh, noise and, you know, is an issue, uh, these do make noise. Uh, it's, it's certainly not loud, but it's persistent. Now, is that a factor? And how far will that travel with different conditions? Here's the flicker issues. Again, the Kidditas uh court case is providing some guidance for us. Aviation safety, uh, we've talked about, and this includes uh the idea of of uh crop dusting in small airports as well as other that. Uh, there's some other Benton County code that we just uh looked at it for some guidance. And then decommissioning. How do we uh, how do we plan for the removal of these at the end of their useful or economic lifetime? So that, all of these will result in something called a So that, all of these will result in something called a constraint map as well as policy. Our GIS folks are working on this right now with these draft setbacks notably. And obviously, the one we, we have no knowledge is, is a setback between participating and non-participating owners. We, we have no way to guess that at the moment. But you can see this, this list of a dozen or so different kinds of setbacks. And what that'll produce is a map that'll simply say, here are the areas that we think need to be protected. And by, by comparison, here are the ones that fit, that, that, that you can build in without violating any of these restrictions. That will be the single easiest tool to hand to a prospective energy company to say, well, if you, if you match your wind or your economic need with these areas outlined here, you just stand a really good chance of getting a permit, going through all the other steps, of course. But if you're proposing them in here, you should know that the county is not supportive of, of that project happening in these areas. So this is kind of the ultimate goal of how we translate this potential code into something that's useful for implementation.
Could I ask, it sounds like this is, this map is maybe not sourced in the best way or whatever the case is in a county map. But have, will staff see or consider comparing this constraint map with the map of parcel owners who have signaled their interest in this?
Of course.
It seems like, I mean, while it shouldn't guide the policy, it feels like it would be helpful to see like, hey, do these constraints take everybody who's already interested in out of this program? Or is it, you know, do, do a lot of them still seem to be eligible sites? And again, I, I don't think that should guide our policy necessarily, but I think it would be an interesting thought experiment to just see like, hey, do these constraints just, you know, put, put a lot of potential players already out or not?
Well, we will certainly know when we see it for the first time. But the, the outright prohibitions are really going to be critical areas or things that are, are, that can't be built on now. I, I don't see this being something that prohibits its use in large tract ag, as long as that use is either mitigated in some way. Or we can, you know, we can show that it, it fits a bigger public purpose.
Clarification then to help me out. The energy providers here in our Spokane County, three to four of them, whatever they are approximately. How are they going to be and what is their voice going to be in regards to this policy? And what can happen in some areas into their area?
Clarify that for me.
Well, for example, like Avista, is Avista going to have a play into this? Is the power going to have a play? And some of the other outline there, what about the PUDs that are sitting out there?
We will be, we will be reaching out to all of them. I've talked to Avista already. We're setting up a meeting in the coming weeks to, to talk about their participation. There's a, there's an economic argument. Well, first off, these towers are generated from a, a company building the tower and selling that power to a user. Most of that power is going to flow over Avista transmission lines. So Avista has to be involved in this.
That's what I was getting at.
The other part though is, is, is the ener- is the ener-, energy is fungible. But is the energy being generated, being used and consumed by businesses and users in Spokane County? Or is it being sold over the retail market to users in California? In other words, are, is the county taking a land use issue, but not getting an economic benefit from it? So we can't necessarily answer that directly, but it can be part of a permitting process too.
So therefore, your question will be on the table of what is their participation going to be? And how do they see it for in the future? Because they're building lines accordingly to the growth that we're going to be looking through under the GMA. I mean, it's just, it's one big ball.
It, it has many layers. It is an onion with many layers. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have in terms of sharing our, our basic information. We'd welcome you to open a public hearing and start listening to our citizens.
Is there a motion to open the public testimony?
Still moved?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's open. Do we have people online?
You've got some yellow cards there.
Oh, excuse me, wrong pile. Mr. Steve Compton?
Thank you. My wife Shelley and I have been residents of Spokane County since two thousand and seven. We have a great value to our rural way of life and are encouraged by the earlier topic of the, the gun range considerations that the Planning Commission addressed. And we definitely see some parallels in the gun range issue to the wind turbine issue, although there are a lot of other economic considerations. And we're sensitive to that as well. Spokane County obviously is a beautiful place. Where we live, a lot of wildlife, birds. We live on the banks of Amber Lake in the county. And it's been brought to our attention that some of our neighbors, neighboring ranchers are interested in the wind turbine projects. And we are sensitive to that. Mr. Chesney addressed the, the issue in Benton County. It's real. So I commend Spokane County on being proactive and developing some guidelines to address this. I have a friend in Kennewick who was quite involved for the past close to a couple of years in trying to deter over two hundred wind turbines in the Horse Heaven Hills, of which many were taller than the Space Needle is what has been proposed. So there was a lot of time and energy put into that, only to be served as a compromising proposal to the governor's desk, which was immediately, almost immediately rejected. In other words, our governor said, no original proposal or nothing is what I'll sign. So I think there is some urgency for Spokane County in trying to preserve some way of life here in, in the county. Location, 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 obviously, and the distance and setbacks. The impacts of wind turbines is hugely important. So I did greatly appreciate the endorsements that were added to the gun range. And I hope that the Planning Commission can give similar considerations. The one thing I did not see in the goals part of this proposal was the impact on surrounding neighbors. And I think that is something that guidelines, because it will be very impacting. There are growing health concerns surrounding wind turbines. Thank you for the time.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick point of order. We will be recommending that you take a thirty-minute lunch break at noon. So if, if there are, if we can get in, you know, most of our testimony, that's great. But we will be, we will be taking a thirty-minute break at noon.
That's very considerate. Mr. Kelly Maroney?
Thank you. My name's Kelly Maroney. I work with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And I'm the project leader of the Turnbull National Wildlife Refuge, which Director Chesney has spoken about at the last couple of meetings. First, I want to appreciate, let the council know, I appreciate the opportunity to review and comment on the proposed ordinance for wind energy. And again, like the previous speaker, I commend the county for being proactive and, and kind of directing and protecting the, the community with future development. We support properly placed renewable energy projects that are compatible with wildlife and their habitats. And of course, the other concerns throughout the county. However, we do recommend that there be more specific language, similar tuned to the, the gun range in terms of the sensitivity and of the resource values in the channeled scablands of Spokane County, which have some of the highest wetland densities in, in the state of Washington comparable to the, the prairie potholes of the Upper Midwest. The channeled scablands, which include Turnbull National Wildlife Refuge, are considered an area of both regional and national conservation importance, especially the wetlands and migratory birds that, that utilize those wetlands. It, it has some of the highest, as I mentioned, highest densities of wetlands in, in the state of Washington. And it's supported by several conservation plans by a number of entities, including the state of Washington, which identifies Turnbull as a priority area for habitat and species in their list. Not only are we important for wildlife and habitat, but Turnbull also hosts over eighty thousand visitors a year, including up to ten thousand school-aged children. Turnbull is not only a community asset, it is also a regional asset and a really a true gem of the, in the Northwest that should be protected. I did have a chance to review the, at least draft codes that the Planning Department has put together. And I did notice that there's several omissions in terms of the habitat and conservation values related to wetlands and actually Turnbull itself. Under section fourteen, eight-three-zero, zero-five-zero-E, one-D, it does mention to identify wildlife refuges within five miles of a project site. But it, it really does not talk about what type of limitations that would put on the project. It just says, identify the refuge. We would propose language that would include setbacks. It does say five miles. If five miles is a setback, then, then we're happy with that setback. Otherwise, the other point that was brought up earlier was there are some interests in development. Oh, wow, really? Okay, well, I do-
If I could, if I could interrupt here for just a second, I would like to engage in a little dictatorship here for just a moment and allow you to speak longer. I, I have numerous concerns and questions. And I, I really look forward to hearing what you've got to do. So I'd like to mute the time clock for a minute.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, those three minutes, do come out quick. I do have specific details that, that we were planning to submit to the county. So I, I don't necessarily have to go through all these, but most of them are related, related to setbacks on the refuge. The one thing that I think is of importance is currently we have a refuge that, that is about twenty-five thousand acres in total. Back in two thousand and seven, through the public planning process, through NEPA, engaging public comment, the refuge approved boundary, which I would liken to the urban growth plan for the county, was expanded. So my recommendation would be, or the Fish and Wildlife recommendation would be to use the stewardship area as the, the boundary of the refuge. Because we are acquiring, we're currently in negotiations with, with landowners to acquire additional acres for the refuge. And the other point I'd like to suggest is several of the assessments talk about a number of habitats that should be evaluated. But none of those sections talk about wetlands. And I know wetlands are, are covered under Spokane's Critical Area Ordinance. I, I do believe that it would make sense to at least reference, if not add to the, to the sections in wind energy, at least reference that. So an applicant knows that there are additional steps that they're going to have to take in terms of submitting the application and going through the consulting process. I have also consulted with the Migratory Bird Program of U.S. Fish and Wildlife, who has also provided pretty good extensive guidance actually in developing best practices and setbacks for, for wind energy development, which I'll, I'll share with, with Scott's team as well. That's all I have for now, unless you have some questions.
Any members of the Planning Commission have any questions for Fish and Wildlife?
Just, can you please send, sorry, could you just please send us your comments in a written form? So it's most helpful when we're working to do this. So if you could do that, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I don't want to be too dramatic here, but we're kind of sitting where the people were who approved dams ninety years ago. And now we're looking at the consequences. And I'm, I've read just enough about what wildlife and bats and others are killed. Is, is what you read even close to true? Is, do you have statistics on how this would affect wildlife in our pop, in our Spokane County?
We, we don't have the exact specifics on those, but there is quite a bit of literature out there, as you've mentioned, that, that does document significant impacts. And Turnbull National Wildlife Refuge was established in nineteen thirty-seven for migratory birds, which certainly don't really mesh up well with wind turbines.
If you could include in your public, or in your comment to us, like, the most authoritative source on that sort of thing, that would be helpful to just what talks about the impacts on migratory birds, that would really be helpful.
Absolutely, I can do that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
Michael Chambers?
Morning. My name's Michael Chambers, three-three-four-two-four, South Houck Avenue, Cheney, Washington. I want to thank you for allowing us to speak today, all of us. Rather than read my, all my concerns, I actually gave hard copies so that you guys all have hard copies to look at the majority of my text. But there are a few things that have come up since I've been sitting here this morning listening. And for, one of the things is, there's a lot of conversation today about everyone's rights. You know, and we, we talk about the, the rights of landowners, and I agree with that. But property lines can be infringed upon by sound and view and things like that. Now, I'm not claiming that I have a view right, but I am saying that there should be consideration for a view that is noisy and disturbing and has other potentials to it. One of the things on the seven bullet points, it said, there was seven, I believe. I think there was a whole, the list was, doesn't mention residential property rights. And so I think that in the formula, we should probably at least consider the people who aren't benefiting from these wind turbines, which somebody brought up already, that maybe our area doesn't even benefit from the energy generated from these turbines, that we should consider that. I have no problem whatsoever with someone who owns property and doesn't mind a turbine in their backyard. But I do think that we that don't have that kind of option won't, won't be forced to live with that. Another one that was brought up was the aviation of croplands, you know, with the, the crop dusters. Well, I, and in my written copy, I itemize fire potential. If we, in fear with aerial fire support, we could end up in a lot of trouble. We, out in the scablands, we have a lot of bodies of water that actually are used for fire suppression where the bombers scoop water out. And you can read in my hard copy of some of the things about that. I guess one of the things I would ask you to start with consideration is for any residential establishment, that if you would, if you're going to put a boundary, instead of one point five, it should be a mile from a residential property. Not from the residential property that's benefiting from the turbines-generated funds, but from the property owners that get nothing out of it except the noise, the visual and the flicker and whatever else that comes along with it. Because there's a lot of things that we are learning.
Lorna Crop, please. Welcome.
My name is Lorna Crop. I'm the president of the Board of the Friends of Turnbull National Wildlife Refuge. Thank you for allowing us to come and speak. Basically, we are first concerned that the time limit might be shortened. And we think that this is an, an issue which needs to be talked about more extensively. And I appreciate the conversation that Mr. Chesney had in the presentation. I think that, and plus- I think that, and plus the discussion that we listened to this morning earlier, having more specific guidelines in the code will be very helpful, particularly if you're protecting, you have areas that you want to protect. I like the idea of his constraint map. And allowing buffer zones, five miles for a, would be probably acceptable for Turnbull. I believe everything that Mr. Maroney said. And we are hopeful that you will add that language to the actual code. The draft had no mention of Turnbull or refuges. It said that, anyway, please add that language.
Can I ask you a question of clarity? You said five miles, and I'm trying to, can you put that in as contents of how it applies to Turnbull?
Using the stewardship area and then have a buffer of five miles around that.
From the perimeter of the Turnbull?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think there's an expanded boundary that's like the stewardship area, so there's like the regular boundary. But I think what they're articulating is there's basically like an expanded boundary of target parcels that are already used by the birds, but that have not yet been brought under the purview of the wildlife refuge.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackson Morgan? We have anybody online that wants to-
Morning Commissioners. My name is Jackson Morgan. I'm a Spokane County resident, and I'm here representing Tenaska and Cordelia Power. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today and for the thorough and thoughtful work that you're putting into developing this ordinance. As a developer of energy projects, we're genuinely excited about the wind projects being planned in Spokane County. These initiatives promise significant benefits, creating jobs, increasing tax revenue, and providing valuable educational opportunities for the county's youth. We're proud to be partnering with more than fifty Spokane County families who have committed more than thirty-nine thousand acres for wind energy development. And we deeply appreciate the responsibility and care the county planning commission and county commissioners are showing in crafting the zoning ordinance. After a detailed review of the proposed ordinance, I'd like to share some comments and recommendations based on our experience with energy projects across the country and practical needs for successful and responsible wind energy development. Starting with section eight three zero point zero seven zero, conditions for meteorological towers. These meteorological towers or MET towers look like a cell phone tower. They're essential in both the planning and operational phases of a wind energy project. MET towers collect vital data on wind speed, temperature, and other factors that help us accurately estimate energy yield. Typically, these towers are between sixty to eighty meters in height. The towers Cordelia Power uses are sixty meters tall, and we ensure that they comply with FAA lighting and marking requirements. To accommodate placement of standard meteorological towers, we recommend adjusting the corresponding section of the draft from sixty to eighty feet to sixty to eighty meters. Next, I'd like to address setbacks from incorporated communities, covered in draft section eight three zero point one zero zero. Setbacks are crucial, are a crucial element in zoning ordinances because they balance the development rights of participating landowners, the interests of non-participating landowners, and the operational needs of the wind project. The current draft suggests a setback of ten times the turbine height, which would extend more than a mile into unincorporated rural areas, potentially limiting the property rights of rural landowners who would like to participate in this project. We propose applying a four times the tip height setback, which aligns with the standards applied to occupied structures of non-participating landowners in the current draft and would be slightly greater than the twenty-five hundred foot setback applied in other projects across Washington State. Staying in section eight three zero point one zero zero and moving to the paragraph covering setbacks from roads and property lines of non-participating landowners. Nationally, a setback of one point one times the turbine height from roads and property lines has proven effective in ensuring safety, minimizing impacts on neighbors, and optimizing turbine placement. The current draft ordinance proposes a one point five times turbine height setback, which, in our view, unnecessarily reduces developable land without providing additional safety benefits beyond those that are already achieved by a one point one times height setback. Accordingly, we suggest implementing this one point one times turbine height setback from roads and property lines of non-participating landowners. This approach reflects a practical balance between safety and project viability, ensuring- appreciate that, Mr. Chair. This approach, accordingly, we suggest implementing this one point one times turbine height setback from roads and property lines of non-participating landowners. This approach reflects a practical balance between safety and project viability, ensuring that wind energy developments are both responsible and effective. Finally, I'd like to discuss setbacks from private use runways. While safety near these runways is undoubtedly important, it's also crucial to consider the fairness of imposing stringent setbacks on neighboring properties, because many of these neighbors did not consent to the establishment of a private use runway and have received no consideration for the limitations this ordinance would place on their property development rights. The current draft setback requirements could unfairly prevent these landowners from participating in wind energy projects, potentially diminishing their ability to benefit from the economic opportunities these projects offer. To better balance the priorities of safety and property development, we recommend incorporating an effective date into the ordinance. This date would specify when a private use runway must have been operational to receive the setback protections outlined in the draft. Establishing a clear timeline ensures that the ordinance fairly addresses both safety concerns and the rights of neighboring landowners to participate in wind energy projects moving forward. In conclusion, we believe these recommendations grounded in industry best practices and a deep understanding of wind energy development offer a balanced framework that respects the rights of both participating and non-participating landowners while ensuring the viability and safety of wind projects. In addition to my comments today, I've submitted for the record a letter from my colleagues at Tenaska and Cordelia with the same observations and recommendations. Thank you again for your time and consideration. Spokane County stands to gain immensely from well-planned development. We look forward to collaborating with you to make these projects successful for everyone involved.
How are you doing?
I'm doing well, Mr. Edwards. How are you?
Couple of questions I have for you is, you're mentioning that this is going to bring more jobs here. What kind of jobs is it going to bring to Spokane?
Sure.
And secondly, how many jobs? And are they like full-time jobs with benefits and everything like that? That's my first question.
I'll start by speaking from the I. I'm a Spokane County resident, providing me a job right now. There are several folks that are involved in the development process. Both Cordelia and Tenaska try to commit themselves to engaging in the communities in which they operate. So that's, that's one thing. Secondly, during the construction phase, we seek to employ local general contractors. And then during the operational phase, there's a lot of tower maintenance jobs. A recent study by Lawrence Berkeley National Labs found that for every, for every one million dollars spent on a, spent on a wind energy project, one half of a FTE, full-time job with benefits, is created by the project.
Okay. And the second question is, with these other fifty families in the thirty-nine thousand acres, what is, what is the average that Tenaska is paying to these families or whatnot? What kind of economic impact is that going to have for our county here? They start spending it or whatnot? How much do you guys pay those families?
We pay them on an acreage basis, as well as, once the project is planned out. Right now, we're, right now, the acres that we've engaged, we're paying them for their right to study the land, to gauge its suitability for a wind project. Then during the actual operation-
What do you pay them for the study when you're going out there and on their property? How much, how much is that?
I think-
Average?
Average, I mean, probably close to ten dollars an acre.
Okay.
Per year. It gets, grows to be significantly more during the operational phase. During, once turbines are placed, they're paid per megawatt of installed nameplate capacity on the turbine.
So back to the jobs, I mean, obviously, they're going to come in, if, you know, if it gets approved and you guys start building these, there's going to be a lot of subcontracting and everything like that that's coming in. But how many permanent jobs do you foresee on thirty-nine thousand acres?
It's too early in the project to tell right now. I wish I could tell you, we're probably six or seven years away from a turbine being put in in Spokane County or Lincoln County.
Okay.
But, you know, and once we get a better understanding of the land that we have to work with, we'll have an understanding of the number of turbines, and that'll directly impact the number of turbine technicians that get hired, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Last question too, why Spokane now? You know, why not, why not in ten years or why not ten years ago? Why are companies like you, the one you represent, interested in Spokane today?
I think they've been interested in it for a while, but we're getting to a point now where the technology has caught up with the ability to harness what's available here.
So basically, what you're saying is, there was, there was lower hanging fruit that allowed for the less polished technology to work just fine?
Yes.
But now, as the technology is better, the options for placement have expanded significantly.
As Mr. Chesney pointed out during his comments, as the turbines, as technology has changed, we've been able to harness more energy with less.
Great, thanks. I did not see your written comments, but if staff asked them, if you could please forward them, that would be much appreciated.
Yes, sir. I was referencing private use runways.
Like for crop dusters or?
There, I'm not sure what they're used for. I can speak to crop dusting, if you'd like to hear about how we work with crop dusting. So there, the draft in its current state has a mandatory setback from private use runways.
Mandatory setback, okay.
I believe so, I believe so. When it comes to crop dusters in areas where we operate, like I said, we try to get engaged with the communities in which we're operating. Crop dusters can reach out to our operations and maintenance offices where turbine operations are done. We actually have the ability to turn the blades in a certain way to accommodate movement of crop dusting aircraft. And we have done that in other areas in which we operate.
Well, it's a proud question for you, Scott. What's our environmental, do we do a SEPA checklist, an expanded DNS, a full-blown EIS? What do we have for?
This will very likely require an environmental impact statement.
So where does that fit into our process?
Down the road, quite a ways. It comes at the permitting stage, because there'll be, a checklist will be performed. It will almost certainly show that there is a determination of significance, which then generates the need for EIS.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you both, thank you all.
Do we have someone online to talk? I'm going to bring them up and we'll-
Hi, this is Lunell Hott. Are you ready for me?
We are.
Ah, you lucky dogs. I was coming to say, please extend the comment period. And look, you've already figured out that that's an important thing to do. So I want to thank you very much for your foresight in that. The other things that I would like to mention is that the Inland Northwest Trails and Conservation Coalition is in the process with Carrie Brooks of making a map of wildlife and conservation corridors, which we hope to be useful in the update of the comprehensive plan. And I think having that map, which is going to be available quite soon, will be useful in your looking at how you develop the document that you're now working on. I have not read all seventy-seven pages of it, but one of the things that I specialize is in being paranoid and what could go wrong concerns. And because I have some background in large, in projects that have said, yes, and we'll clean it up, and those projects have gone bankrupt. And I'm certainly not saying that that will happen with Cordelia. But I really think that how we think about this long-term life cycle is important. And I hope that that kind of consideration is included in the, in the regulations that we develop. I'm also curious about, like, how do you recycle these things? So, and that's just, you know, a topic for another day. But, but I appreciate the extension on the public comment period. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any question? Thank you. Do we have anybody else to testify? Sir?
Well, this is Paul Crop. I think I got to be muted. I'd like to make three short comments. One is a compliment to staff and the research that they've done. I've actually looked at all of the documentation that's currently available. It is extensive, it is, it is well, well-constructed and extremely informative. The one comment I would make to folks about this is that this kind of permitting applies only to ag lands, as I understand it. So that actually leaves a lot of the county out of, out of even any part in this discussion. Second of all, I appreciate the extension. I think Mr. Chesney said, extension for public comment of the hearing would be for an indefinite period, which means you're not necessarily going to take it up next time, but you could. And finally, just an observation about, about wildlife and Turnbull. Now, there is, there is, I think, we all ought to recognize a sense in which the population there, all of the, all of the species of all kinds is no, no different from urban, human populations and ought to be given the same consideration. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Chesney?
Chairman, I appreciate Paul's kind words and want to acknowledge that Joshua Warwick is the planning staff that has been the author and researcher on all of this work, and he has done an outstanding job.
Any other business that we want to conduct before we break for lunch?
Just, just one other question, Scott. Paul said that this is only in a certain zoning category. Is this limited to a certain zoning category or what is?
We're, yeah, we're obviously early on in the process. The initial emphasis came on trying to look at how we're protecting our ag or our resource land. So that was the initial focus. It will likely have a prohibition in most other zones. But it'll be outright prohibited in most of the urban categories.
Great. And then could I just ask one more question? First of all, the recommendation today is, is one that is just the emotion that the planning commission continue this indefinitely? Or we don't need to make a motion or what, what is?
You, you don't need to make a motion. If you felt the urge to do so, for the record, that's fine. But as long, all we're saying is we're not asking you to take any action today.
Cool, and we'll leave the public record open.
I have a question and a comment. Way back when, twenty years ago, we were talking about cell towers was the word, not even wind towers. And I know we'll have to visit that, I assume, at the same time. I'm just trying to say, let us not forget some of these comments of the wildlife. I mean, all of these things all pertain to even cell towers. So I just think that that's just a tag along that I wanted to add to it, if you wouldn't mind.
I, I do have a question. I believe I saw in the spokesman, I don't know why it's not standing on. The solar panel farms were going to be considered along with this? And I thought you had said last time, hey, we got enough on our plates?
It was a lame attempt at humor, I'm afraid. Now, Josh was working on a parallel process researching solar industrial scale or utility scale installations as well. There has been interest. I have met with a company that is also talking to landowners in the Palouse area. And we told them at that time that while the county code was silent on solar utility scale solar installations, that protecting a large tract ag was a priority- utility scale solar installations, that protecting s- a large tract ag was a priority of the county and would likely prohibit solar in those areas even into the future. But we've, we've opened up a parallel course of study on solar and we hope to have that back in the next couple of months.
And I guess finally, and maybe this is just a comment more than anything, I, I'm assuming, at least I've never heard of trying to regulate where the power gets sold to. I mean, our waste energy plant goes to Seattle Power and Light. And so I don't know if the, the energy would be sold to Bonneville, the, BPA, or, you know. What kind of a boon besides the minimal jobs, once the construction is over? Or maintenance, would there be to those users of power here in the county?
Uh, at this point, we don't know, but it's a question that will be in the research.
And it's foreseeably something that may be prohibitive and maybe is worth the, the companies that are pursuing this opining on, but would a requirement that a certain percentage of the power be sold locally or regionally kill the project or make the projects not feasible? It's a kind of question that I have interest in if say fifty percent of the product needing to be sold to a regional provider. Would that, would that be possible or not? And so I know that you may not have the answer to that question, but that's one I'd be interested in, in a future um workshop or future hearing on this item.
I, I would expect there would be some statewide um interest in that, that would prohibit the county from having its own more restrictive regulation than, than those state as a whole. Uh, it's also probably outside of our legal purview. Uh, you know, it would, it would be, I guess the analogy might be that, okay, we're growing wheat, but we're exporting ninety percent of it to Asia. Should we be requiring fifty percent of the wheat to stay here? You know, we, we don't get into that sort of uh deep regulation. So. And, and as far as the sale of the power, again, it's, it's out of our control to a large degree. Uh, but one of the things with, working with Avista or inland power is, uh, you know, are you planning to purchase some of this power? I mean, will there be a benefit to our local distributors of energy?
Thanks for that analogy. And then just one last question. So we're continuing indefinitely, but do you foresee that we'll have this on our next agenda as well, or should we plan for the end of September agenda? What, what do you anticipate?
Uh, what we will do after today is take uh the testimony that we've received, both here and online. Uh, summarize that and we will have another briefing with our board and say, here's, here's what we heard in round one. What other things are you interested in the planning commission examining? And we'll bring that back as an agenda for a, a future discussion. Uh, this is, you know, it's a very complex piece of legislation that we're trying to put together. Uh, we're using examples, we're using best practices. It is our goal to have something adopted by the end of the year. Uh, and, and recognizing that what we're adopting may be a minimal standard that could be revised as we move forward.
Thanks for the timeline. That's all I've got.
It's amazing, sir. You've brought us right in here at noon. Is there anything else before we adjourn for lunch?
Yeah, is, is there more testimony on this item?
I don't think we have. I don't have any other slips. I have one slip for one of your tasks.
No, if, if we're not inconveniencing anybody on this item, I'd say sure, it's a good time to take a break.
Any other speakers? Then we'll, we're, we're adjourned until twelve-thirty. Is that all right?
Okay. Okay.
Uh. Thank you. Something really. I think. There, there, there.
And.
Yeah, I think.
I muted.
Probably. Did you even win? There we go.
Okay.
Lori, Lori, could you hear us? Is the video on? Well, it looks like the video is muted on that one. Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Yes.
There you go. There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, I need my clicker. We are ready to go.
I have a request.
Yeah.
Item CPA call has pointed to the speaker here.
Certainly.
Yes.
Thanks for accommodating that, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, while we work out our technical issues, I would absolutely invite you or let invite the participant from the audience to speak about twelve twenty-three. As a refresher, that as a refresher, that's on the north side of the metro area, an area of single-family homes with two vacant parcels that are proposed for a higher-density residential project. This was before you in two thousand and twenty-three, and it was sent forward to the board with your recommendation for adoption. The board sent or held it over for a year to allow for additional public comment and public participation, which has been solicited throughout the year as well as in workshops that you've had in the past. The in terms of the package that you will see before you on September twelfth, we will be asking you to affirm or reject your decision of last year and send it that recommendation to the board. So if 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 you've if anyone has some questions that we can answer without our exhibits, I'm happy to do so, otherwise I'd I'd open it to the public.
Can you give me a rundown? What is the name of it or what is the number of it or?
It's CPA twelve twenty-three. In again, staff reports and things were were in your folders and packets. I don't have any of our visuals up here at the moment. Yeah, this is on Mill Road. It's on it's on the east side of the road. We spent a lot of time on it. There was a lot of public comment last year. At staff, as far as I know, nothing has changed about the proposal, correct? No, cool. Uh, we have we have reviewed and and accepted more comment, but there has been nothing in that that changes the findings or the conclusions that were recommended to you.
I would move to open the public testimony or public hearing.
We.
Oh, this is just a workshop.
This is this is just a workshop. You don't have to make a formal motion. You can simply invite the resident to come up at any time, which we're happy to do.
Mr. Manley.
Thank you.
The podium is yours, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Joseph Manley, and I live at one three two one zero North White House Street. Over the course of three public hearings, you've heard a wide range of comments from the Arrowhead Point neighborhood. I'm here today. I had spoke before about sewage and parking. So I'm here today to reinforce that talk. I'm a planning professional. And I know that these features, these factors are normally dealt with by people further down the line in permitting processes and in authorizations. I'm concerned that parking or the waiver of parking is a very popular action nowadays in the quest to provide affordable housing. That can work in downtown Spokane, but you're on the edge of the rural district here. So parking is an issue. The second issue is sewage. I've lived in eleven states and three countries, and the history of the Arrowhead Point sewage system is unique in what I have seen. So today I want to talk about that briefly. Uh, this site is not serviced by STA. There is no public transportation for more than a mile from this site. Very hard to get to in the winter, especially in a heavy snow and especially when the plows are at work. I'm also concerned about the proposed development's impact on the sewage sys- system that currently exists in Arrowhead Point. It's a really weird history. I can share it with you briefly if you are interested in the mechanics of something like this. But wastewater development from this proposed site should not be directed into the Arrowhead Point system. It needs to go directly into the main line that runs up Mill Road. For parking, I would ask that we strictly adhere to the code requirements of one point five parking spaces per unit plus spaces for guests, the disabled and adequate trash facilities. There's no on-street parking anywhere near this this site. So they have to accommodate, and they're now talking forty units. So we're talking going from three people living on this site to sixty people living on the site with no way to get anywhere except if they had a car. So I would ask that if you are going to approve this project, you do it with the restriction that the parking code be fully enforced and that the sewage not be tied into Arrowhead Point. With that, I thank you, and we'll take questions.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, I'm refreshing my mind, and I think I I remember now where this one was at because I was involved in that conversation or the hearing or the information that was brought about it by this. And help me out. Do they the this site, do they have the right and the ability to hook hook into um the existing system of Arrowhead and has have been approved and with no restrictions or or what do they have?
When I review the CPA twelve dash twenty-three documents, the wastewater people said that a hookup is available. I don't know what that means. Mill is a north-to-south.
I know.
arterial. The eastern side of it was developed first of single-family homes on one or plus acre lots, and they had septic systems. Thirty years later, Arrowhead came along. They built a network of wastewater between all the homes that went to a collection point on the far west of Arrowhead. And then by gravity, it went down into the little Spokane Valley to sewage ponds that were open-air septic tanks. EPA came along a few years later and said, you can't really do that. So by that time, uh, the sewer had been extended out Mill, which is above our development. And the county installed a pump station at the bottom, at the western edge where the collection point originally was and pumped it back up to the Mill Line. Between the time of the EPA requiring that and um the development of Arrowhead between those two points, the people in the single-family homes were given the option of abandoning their septic tanks because the county was trying to move away from those and hooking into our network of lines. So the I haven't been able to establish it from anybody yet, but this site is probably already hooked into Arrowhead. And now they're going to go from three residents to sixty. And our system is theoretically already at its maximum, so.
Mr. Chairman, or excuse me, Scott. I assume this has all been researched, and so there's adequate. Thank you for your answer, but I do they have the right to reject it at this point or accept it the treatment plan?
Normally, and in every case, when a development plan is actually proposed and we have building permits, we can then do those impacts. But Louis Graff from our wastewater management system is here to answer some of those questions, and I'll have him step up.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Louis Graff, the wastewater system administrator. I I wasn't prepared to talk on this one today, but just looking at the map, this parcel or parcels along the east side of Mill Road, there's a sewer line that goes north on Mill Road that goes down to our Dartford Pump Station. So where this site is, it would not be directed to the Arrowhead um point lift station that's in in the on the west side of of Mill.
Great. Thanks for that clarification. Appreciate you being here to do that.
Thank you.
Does that have an effect?
That will satisfy myself and my neighbors on the sewage issue if you could think about the parking issue.
Oh, oh, hold it, hold it, hold it. You said wastewater. What about the sewage?
That's the wastewater.
Because in some areas, one, are they combined together?
No. You're talking wastewater. Storm, storm versus waste.
Gray water and it's.
Stormwater versus wastewater.
Yep, right.
Okay, the wastewater is the sewer.
Okay, but both of them are covered in.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so our sewer system is is not a combined system like the city of Spokane's, but also, you know, from a house, the gray water or the black water, they're all directed to the sanitary sewer that's in the street and that would go to the.
Adequate capacity for the sixty units that would be proposed.
Yes.
But I I think I'm catching up to your the storm, the stormwater.
That has to be treated on-site, yeah.
Yeah, that's that's totally separate. It probably will go into dry wells and have swales.
They got bad, okay.
Yeah.
That that clear?
Yeah, because I was thinking they're going to put them all together.
No, no, our our system is is a hundred percent wastewater only.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
As to the parking issue, we are, of course, bound by the codes that are in place when the project comes in, and there is.
And there has been no effort on the county's part to uh. Abolish parking standards for residential development at this point. We'll be looking at all those considerations in the twenty-six plan is, is how you, how you have uh. Parking standards for edge development, but right now the parking standards that are in place will be enforced when a building permit is brought in.
Can you say off the top of your head approximately how many stalls per unit or what, what the calculation is in this particular site?
Well, we, we don't know uh, exactly what's being proposed for units, but the one and a half is a pretty normal standard.
Great, thanks. Uh, and I just want to point out something else for the record. I, I know I did this last time at the hearing. Uh, but the site is slightly less than a mile from the nearest bus stop. It's forty-six hundred feet, miles fifty-two hundred feet. I know that's not a huge difference, but it's not more than a mile um, at, at the corner or just near the corner of Hastings and Mill. Um, there's, there's another uh, a bus stop. There's also uh, a um. A park and ride. So folks are needing access to downtown or something like that. There is a place for them to drive and park as well. And that doesn't. Cover parking challenges on site. Uh, but this area is pretty well served by STA, I, I would suggest.
May I add that that's not true? Uh, if you were going as the crow flies, when you draw a map like the developer has done with an arc. You cannot go as the crow flies.
I just, I, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I, I just have measured this right now. Um, and I, I have a measurement on my computer and I'm going directly on the sidewalk the entire way, so.
Okay, then I apologize. I drove it in my car is how.
Yeah, I'm measuring it on GPS and it measures out to about forty-seven hundred feet, so.
Okay, um. Other, any other thoughts on this particular piece? Oh, we've got somebody from the audience that wants to speak.
Hello, I'm David McClellan. Are you hearing me?
Yes, we are.
All right. Hello, I'm David McClellan. I'm speaking as an individual. I live at three, one, one, West Wilson Avenue. I also am on the board of the Arrowhead Point uh, homeowners association. I'm quite opposed to this. Change from low density to medium density. I feel that it will adversely affect property values. I know that that is found to be. Uh, no empiric evidence in the uh, findings from the staff. It is not harmonious with the area. It's not to the scale and design of the area per UL. Two point one seven. We had a good meeting with the developer and quite honestly, we're very. Open to low-density development, which would give them twelve units on this very small one and a half. Uh, acre parcel, but. The medium-density units of forty-two would make this really against the nature of the area there. Um, we don't mind whether they would be duplexes or single-family houses. There's a duplex development that is. Very nearby, this done very well and we don't have any difficulty with it. Again, they have addressed that the particular process we're following. Uh, getting a, a input from the community was a, a little bit truncated. And they have offered us other opportunities for input. We've given our views and it looks like they've all been um, disregarded. I have one. That is actually uh, of concern to me. The traffic study I feel is ludicrous. That they've done changing from medium density of twelve units. Uh, sorry, medium uh, low-density of twelve units to medium-density of forty-two. That triples the number of units and that would increase the population from thirty to sixty-three. Doubling that population. In that, the traffic study states that. These increases would decrease the number of round trips. Or trips that are taken from the area and I find that just absolutely ridiculous just on the face of it. I did think that perhaps they might consider using some access from Mayfair Road to get better. Uh, use of the property itself. Um, I think that the. Uh, low-density would be feasible. Um, and I don't think there's any push to make this medium-density. Uh, I don't think that this plan is well thought out. The parking is a tremendous issue. The plot that we were shown by the developer did not have one point five. Did not have sixty-three units of uh, parking available here. Perhaps this would be better to leave it as is low des- density and see what happens in the twenty-six plan. Are there any questions for me from the commission?
Uh, nothing. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much for listening.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would ask for a ten-minute break while we diagnose and get our video back up. So we can make our presentation.
Yeah, if I could just quickly, I just, I'm gonna have to depart. And so I just want to say just briefly on this project. I know we're not in a hearing, it's just a workshop, but. You know, to me still, nothing has changed about this project and I don't want to put a lot of uh, thought into this. If nothing has changed, I did put a lot of thought into it last time and so. Um, you know, my, my feelings on this project will remain the same and I'll continue to support it unless something changes about the proposal. Thanks.
Logan, was that a? You would like, it is gonna be continued? Is that what you're saying?
This is just a workshop, so it's, you know, not here for hearing it, but when it comes for a hearing unless something changes, I'm gonna support it. This, this, because we supported it last time. And again, so for me, I need to hear something that's different for me to not support it this time and so. I understand that the public feedback was the commission's concern and so. Um, hopefully this more robust public comment opportunity will suffice.
Unless I have any objection from the planning commission, I would suggest we grant the. The planning commissioners, the planning chairmans, whatever, whatever you are. Your, your, your planning director, your ten-minute break. So you can get the equipment to run. So.
So. Are you gonna bring that?
Hello, I'm terribly sorry to interrupt. There is no sound on the on the web. We can't hear you.
Okay, Kevin, thank you.
I heard that, just so you know, but I couldn't hear anything else.
Okay, well, we'll we've had some some technical issues here today, so I apologize for that. It sounds like we can try to get started again.
Thanks for letting me butt in. Sorry about that.
Oh, no, I appreciate the heads up. We can never really tell what's happening until somebody gets a hold of us. Dead again. Sorry, everybody. We're still trying to get our tools together here. So those again, those were zone amendments. The first CPA of the year is 2002. This is about a little less than an acre north of Country Homes Boulevard off Wall Street. It's being proposed to HDR. Next slide, please. Well, the population impact would be as much as 20 20 more persons if it goes to HDR. There has there is some stormwater risk on the western portions or the northwest portion that has to be accounted for. Otherwise, no other critical areas. It is within proximity to bus stops and commercial areas. Some of the public comments that we've received over time, the traffic, the traffic, our Public Works Traffic Department shows no major impact. Water issues, stormwater, as long as it follows our stormwater manual and no issues, no issues are anticipated. Here's the parking requirement. And emergency vehicle access was a concern. We don't have a comment. It's on a major arterial doesn't if you safety and property values are there. The SEPA conditions involuntary discovery plan, and as you know, that's the tool we use to look for Native American artifacts or things of cultural importance that might be on the site. Property is we're saying it needs to be evaluated for inclusion on the National Registry from its age and then water main and pay for potential improvements. This is the surrounding area. Excuse me. Now you can see it's close to some formal parks, conservation areas, transit, commercial, and so on. If there are questions about number two, I'm happy to take them now.
I have a question. What's an involuntary? Native habitat, whatever it is.
A discovery report. It is an analysis of the land itself to see whether there may have been Native American settlement there at some time. If that is likely, then conditions are put on site development, specifically excavation, that if something is discovered as the site is excavated, you need to stop and get that evaluated for cultural purposes.
The reason I ask is, is I've been required to do that as part of a plan in the city, but it didn't sound like what I read there. Is this something that's on all the projects going forward now, or is this? How do you find out whether you do or you don't?
It comes from, in this case, agency review comments, and we involve the tribes in our agency review. And if they send something back saying this land at some point had some historic benefit and we'd like to put this on here. So if somebody finds something, they call us.
Okay. We we have voted on this one prior to or on this piece of property right here. He wanted to do go back on 224. On the same parcel number here, this is where this gentleman wanted to tear down this house and put up a an apartment complex right in here.
Yes, the proposal is to make move it to high density residential, which is for multifamily purposes.
That's the builder, the property owner, whoever in this was a few months back, but he wasn't even here and beats it dead on arrival. But that is a high traffic area and it turns into one lane. I just have concerns about, you know, first responders. And obviously I see some of the notes and things like that, but I still have concerns about it.
Our our traffic planners did not indicate that any any real deficiency for
We have, if I can remember correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but we had a ton of people from that neighborhood here. Okay, so what are we? What? So he still wants to so not a duplex. He wants to put in apartments still.
Yes. Well, presumably that's what the HDR would allow.
Right. Okay.
Amendment number three is in the Hastings Farwell corridor, where over the last couple of years, this panel has seen several similar amendments moving from low density to medium or high density residential. In this case, the property owner owns both of those as well as the intervening piece, so it would be more of an assembly in that area. It would allow for a substantial increase in population. That part of the Farwell Hastings corridor has been, as we call it, densifying now for years. So this is really consistent with what's going on. We are also working with STA on a current study along Newport Highway and expanding their service. So they are very much aware of bringing in either a station or a park and ride or in addition to regular service into this area. So it's it's clearly emerging as a more dense residential development. It's in a high critical aquifer recharge area. You can see the amenities that are close. There's the surrounding map. Again, you can see also its proximity to the one that we were just talking about 1223. They're within a few miles of each other. And of course, to the to the immediate south of this is Costco and the now emerging Meadworks project by Greenstone Homes. So this will be very active in an area. Any questions on three? Moving on to four. Is a light industrial parcel going to medium density residential? It is. It is in the urban growth area. It is been surrounded by both rail and low density residential traffic. Key issue here is it is not served by urban services at the moment. The closest dry pipe for sewer is about 600 to 700 feet away at the edge of, let's see if we can show it here. Roughly along Farwell Road where it crosses Market Street. There is a an installed sewer for future use in that road, but it ends before you get to the end of that light industrial area on the west side. So there's a healthy distance to hook up urban services on this one.
Is that in proximity to Spalding's? Look, I'm just trying to visualize.
Let me show you the there. So that helps you off the the 395 corridor south of the highway to north. So here's here are the mitigations. We will we will put some aerial photos into these slides for next time. We typically do that.
I need a lot of visual help.
You can see here on the SEPA mitigations from Public Works, building permits won't be issued until the the developers demonstrated the ability to connect to sewer. Oh, and then on the five, this is on the north side of Spangle using some of their urban growth area for from rural traditional into a commercial, regional commercial. The intention is a sort of an entertainment sea store complex, although not with gasoline, more of a roadhouse, I guess, is what's being planned. Also currently unserved by urban services, even though and they they have been working, we've talked with Spangle. The building on the immediate south of this site between the old highway and the new highway is the Spangle Treatment Plant. So it's in immediate proximity to it, but it's it's on the wrong side of gravity for the moment. So there's it won't be a totally easy connection to make. So the critical areas, certainly the creek that runs right through the edges of the site. There is no other issues. There was an initial floodplain designation on part of that site. And that was a remnant of the Spangle Treatment Plant using that as a evaporation pond, which is no longer in use. So that designation is gone. Anyway, the some of the comments we heard, environmental concerns. The the creek, the traffic concerns. DOT will require a trip generation study when the permits are being proposed and there's more specificity. You see, they're they're initially planning to use a well and septic system. Spangle is currently studying their own water plan as as we are for the county as a whole. So as they get some better direction on where their future needs to go for water, this will come into play at that point. Usual things, traffic study comes on later. Inadvertent discovery plan again, as was mentioned before. And because of the small size of Spangle, the entire town is within essentially walking distance of the site. CPA 0222. I'm sorry, I'll go back. Was there any questions about our Spangle project?
Isn't that right next to the Spangle Gun Club too?
I don't know that.
I think it's just north of that.
Good.
Can you see aerial photos into these slides for next time? We typically do that.
I need a lot of visual help.
You can see here on the SEPA mitigations from Public Works, building permits won't be issued until the the developers demonstrated the ability to connect to sewer. Oh, and then on the five, this is on the north side of Spangle using some of their urban growth area for from rural traditional into a commercial, regional commercial. The intention is a sort of an entertainment sea store complex, although not with gasoline, more of a roadhouse, I guess, is what's being planned. Also currently unserved by urban services, even though and they they have been working, we've talked with Spangle. The building on the immediate south of this site between the old highway and the new highway is the Spangle Treatment Plant. So it's in immediate proximity to it, but it's it's on the wrong side of gravity for the moment. So there's it won't be a totally easy connection to make. So the critical areas, certainly the creek that runs right through the edges of the site. There is no other issues. There was an initial floodplain designation on part of that site. And that was a remnant of the Spangle Treatment Plant using that as a evaporation pond, which is no longer in use. So that designation is gone. Anyway, the some of the comments we heard, environmental concerns. The the creek, the traffic concerns. DOT will require a trip generation study when the permits are being proposed and there's more specificity. You see, they're they're initially planning to use a well and septic system. Spangle is currently studying their own water plan as as we are for the county as a whole. So as they get some better direction on where their future needs to go for water, this will come into play at that point. Usual things, traffic study comes on later. Inadvertent discovery plan again, as was mentioned before. And because of the small size of Spangle, the entire town is within essentially walking distance of the site. CPA 0222. I'm sorry, I'll go back. Was there any questions about our Spangle project?
Isn't that right next to the Spangle Gun Club too?
I don't know that.
I think it's just north of that.
This one you've seen several times. It is under consideration with changed potentially different SEPA mitigations that better reflect the 38 acre size of this rather than the 108 acres that was first proposed in 22. None of this has changed from what you've seen before. And what we've proposed is changing the transportation improvements from a requirement to build or improve a pedestrian overpass or grade separation over I 90 to reach the services on the other side and the transit line on the other side to using Abbott and Garden Springs Road, the underpass and being able to construct a much less expensive sidewalk or pedestrian system to connect on that side. There's sort of an added caveat of working with STA to create, at the very least, a bus stop sign on Geiger Road as it comes off of there. So there's a transit connection until such time as STA brings service to the south side of I 90. And on the city side, we removed what they called a special charge for their water and sewer. The city has reached out to us and they've not objected to this removal at this time. It's still going to, like any project, they will pay general facilities charges, they will pay normal sewer and water connection charges. And if there are other parts of that system that have to be augmented, they will be responsible for those costs because it's all city water and sewer.
Scott, wasn't there some discussion on Thorpe Road improvements and that was the traffic? I mean, and I don't recall all of what was just something about it.
Yes, DOT made a comment that the traffic from this site would cause Yes, DOT made a comment that the traffic from this site would cause the, you know, the transportation failure on Thorpe, notably because of the tunnels, to be worse. The applicant has stated that they believe most of the traffic is going to get onto I-90 via the ramps rather than traffic through Thorpe Road to get on 195 and go south into the nature and then come back up. The a more detailed traffic study would have to be done for that. The the challenge with all of these projects on the West Plains is they come in one at a time. And we look at the impacts one at a time. We try to do accumulative impact. But if if this is the first core of what could be a small village of, you know, mixed uses with residential taking on some of that. Yeah, those Thorpe tunnels are going to be a real challenge, and that's not going to be an inexpensive improvement.
How is the city working with us in regards to the sewer and water because they had arms up in the air that we can't do it anymore? I mean, where are we at?
It's it's fair to say, and perhaps if Kevin stood up here, we could bring him on, not to not to put him on the spot. But it's it's fair to say that the city is frustrated with this process. And we share some of that frustration, which is why we want to work with them, particularly in 26 on on what the West Plains area and the Eagle Ridge area is going to look like and how that's going to connect better. So we're setting the table, I guess, for a better collaborative relationship on how this is going to develop. But this piece by piece approach makes it very hard for both governments to accurately forecast what these impacts are really going to be.
I know he won't be here for the next meeting, but if he's here, would he comment to us or not prefer not to?
The applicant?
I know, no, Kevin from the city.
Is he still here? Kevin, would you would you be able to comment?
I'm, I I think I'm on. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I don't know what my video is doing, but thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it. You know, our our concerns that we've stated in our comment letters and emails, all, you know, we still, we share Director Chesney's concern that these piecemeal one at a time requests are very, very difficult to accommodate. I believe as as long as the mitigation is what we've been talking about, I think that the city can accommodate this for for what it is. And, you know, definitely in the long run, we would much rather see a coordinated planning effort in this area than a one by one application process, especially when it comes to water, sewer and traffic. Other than that, you know, I just prefer you to the city's letter.
Thanks, Kevin. And total sidebar, once once we are finished with the 2024 comprehensive plan amendments, you know, the county and the city will be able to, you know, really roll up our sleeves and start talking about 26 and where these plans are going. It's certainly our intent as as a lot of new growth is going to continue to be in county administered urban growth areas. But they're going to be attached to cities. And so we want to have a better planning partnership with all of our cities, but particularly our biggest city. And and the goal is not only to have a more unified 2026 plan, but to have a different way of doing comprehensive plan amendments, which might be something that we, even though we might be allowed to do them annually by GMA, it might be something that we try to batch into five year packages or some some other tool to do that by doing better upfront planning to anticipate where growth is going to go. So we don't necessarily have to do these small pieces at a time. So
I guess my question
We're going to talk about that a lot in the coming weeks.
Appreciate that, but the actions that we take are always subject to the city. Is that correct?
This, well
Water and sewer and traffic.
Yes, we we are, we, the county, are the responsible party, and you will be making that recommendation for the county board's approval. But we don't take action without the city's participation. Because they are, first off, it's 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 the way we should be planning our growth in the interface between the county and city. And secondly, because in this case, the city is in fact the water and sewer provider. And we are not. And so we need to honor and respect their ability to serve that and and put into these projects the conditions that they feel are necessary to make those things go.
I don't know if this is just ancient history, but about 20, 25 years ago, I got a call from the the neighbors to the east of Beacon Hill who wanted the city to relinquish their water rights going up towards Northwood. And they were trying to get the city to either commit to provide water or relinquish them. And it it just turned out about that time, I think, GMA came in and things got patched up. But but it seems like if 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 I don't want to say municipalities, if utilities, water is a utility, I think. If utilities have a district that's allocated to them by the state and they refuse to serve it, it seems to me like there should be some way that they lose that district. And I'm just, I'm just, is that a silly idea? Or or, you know, what do we?
In in part of our planning, we're learning more and more about the emerging water law of Washington. And it does have a use it or lose it provision for most districts, but not for the big municipal districts. They have a water right that is theirs in perpetuity. That said, the city is not refusing to serve. They're just setting the terms by which they will provide that service, and they have that legal ability. If they did in fact say, no, we're simply not going to serve this. Yes, then we would, we would have at least reason to say then you relinquish some part of your rights so someone else can serve it if you refuse to do so. But we're not anywhere close to that point.
Or maybe we are, because if we're, if they're, if they're not going to serve by doubling the rate, how do we as a county plan for that land that's in their district and they're not going to serve it?
Well, that's if we're doing our job well, that's where the whole joint planning thing comes together and makes sense. The city is allowed to charge a higher rate outside of their boundary. I believe they're, they may even be in in some negotiations or even litigation on on the degree of what that change is. But once it's known, then it's that you it's factored into the development project costs itself. You know what it is and you work to to accommodate it.
I don't know if you answered my question, but I'll take it for now.
Okay. As you recall, this one also came in in 22 and was withdrawn. And then we have 1223, which now you can see on the photo off of Mill Road. The the one acre and the one and a half acre parcel that are being proposed to go to a medium density residential. And that would allow, you know, an increase of population to perhaps by 36 based on what could develop under the regular LDR rules for single family, which could be as much as eight units an acre on that two and a half acre parcel. Certainly. Moderate aquifer recharge. Some nearby amenities are in place. Covens, you've you've heard a number of these from the residents over the past two years or year, yet last year, as well as earlier this year. Notably, the charge or the concern of lack of public participation, which the board agreed or at least acknowledged by holding it over for a year to allow another year's worth of comment and and analysis to come in. Nothing out of the ordinary in our MDNS. And again, you can see the map where it's in that north metro UGA corridor. Not too far from some of our other projects. So we've looked at the cumulative impacts and, you know, how they're how they're analyzing the service and LOS assumptions. How we do the dwelling units and the capacities. That leads to keeping our projects, they have to demonstrate concurrency with our capital facilities plan. It's something the county worked very hard on in 22 and 23 to bring those into alignment. So now we've now we've got that happening. And obviously it identifies needs for potential future improvements as well. So bottom line of that is the finding that the adoption of the amendments will not cause a degradation of levels of service. And so they can be in fact accommodated, which provides for their concurrency. And here's our timeline. We're on that third from the bottom bullet. We will be back September 12th for a hearing and it is scheduled to go to the board for their consideration on November 12th. We will be, yes, we will be asking for your action to recommend them to the Board of County Commissioners in favor or against. And Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Happy to take questions from commissioners or audience. I think we've heard everything that we've got coming up for the next couple of weeks. So we'll just defer any further staff report. I will tell you that we do not have minutes ready for your approval. We will do that at your next meeting along with the meeting minutes from here. Correct. It's hard to say. We're always prepared if if a meeting is going long. We generally make that estimate on the volume of comments that we receive ahead of time. We have brought these amendments to you several times, and I think we've taken quite a lot of comment. I'm not sure if people will feel the need to come and reinforce their previous comments or if we will have new new players in the game. But yeah, well, this is really the only major item on the September 12th agenda. So I would, I would say we could, we're likely to be done by noon, but we'll be prepared to go along.
I I really think, given respect to these items, a complete rehearsal of what we just heard today, if not more questions from, I know me, I'm always, maybe I'm not retaining everything. But the point being, there's a lot of things under discussion here that we had talked about six months ago, whenever it was that we did this once before.
We will expand the presentation. I said, we did today more of an abbreviated because the group, you, you as a group have seen this, you know, three times or so this this year. But when we opened that public hearing, we recognize that we may be speaking to people that have never seen it and will give them a more thorough presentation of what's being proposed.
Do you foresee the community participation public on these items?
Oh, certainly.
Anything different from what we have already heard?
Unlikely. I believe we will hear very similar comments to what we've already heard.
And we've got to listen to what they were from before.
Yes. Okay, in the staff report, there are, excuse me. We have these summaries. So if if 12 people made the made a comment about this is going to make traffic problems, we summarize that as one comment. All of the individual comments that we receive, whether it's a telephone log, an email or a letter, are scanned and attached to the back of the staff report, so you can see every individual comment.
I don't know if I brought this up before, but I have one comment I want to share. I received a letter from the Department of Ecology indicating that if a landowner subdivides their property into more than two parcels, 10 acre parcels, where you can get the 10 acre exclusion water right, they're going to start treating that as a development and require a water right. And I have that in writing from the Department of Ecology. And in light of the 10 acre participants in our most recent meetings, that's a lot of people and there's a lot of land out there that landowners are are planning on doing that. I I don't know if you're aware of that, but that that's going to, that could change the ballgame. And just it's kind of surprising, but anyway, I just, I mentioned that it's so.
I didn't know you were surprised so often.
I'm surprised all the time. That's why I don't overreact.
Mr. Chairman, we have nothing else for you today.
Without any objection, shall we adjourn the meeting? Stephen does that so well. We're adjourned.